This is our community's house. We are all guests here to serve it. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver. And so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to our regular meeting of council for June 23rd at seven o'clock. I would like to start up our meeting in a good way and I've asked councillor Ma to read out our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor Little. We respectfully acknowledge the original peoples of these lands and waters, specifically the the Slaypotuff, Squamish and Musqueam on whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value the opportunity to learn, share and serve our community on these unceded lands.
Thank you councillor Ma. All right, councillor, we have an agenda that's been circulated with the package. Any errors or omissions from the agenda as presented. During none, someone move its adoption moved by councillor Mary, second by councillor Forbes, prepared to call the question. All in favor, contrary minded motion is carried. We do have the minutes circulated from the May 26th regular meeting of council included in the package. Are there any errors or omissions from this meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none, will someone please move their adoption? Moved by councillor Mary, second by councillor Back, prepared to call the question, all in favor, contrary minded motion is carried. All right, we preserve a period of up to 30 minutes of time at the front end of any regular meeting of council for matters of interest to the public. And so people can raise their hand or sign up with the clerk in advance and and have an opportunity to speak for three minutes at the front end of the council meeting. At this point, we do have a number of people who have called up and asked to speak and been added to the list. I believe I have six speakers that have been identified. So the first speaker is Hazen Colbert. Joining us virtually, I believe. We have Hazen on the line.
I am on the line, Mayor Little, unfortunately.
Oh.
I actually had to read, I had to actually read your lips to know you were asking me because I couldn't hear, but now I can hear.
You can hear me now?
I can hear you now. Can you hear me fine?
I, four out of five, if you could be a little bit louder, that would help, but, but I think we can understand what you're saying.
Thank you. So I'd like to start off first of all by saying that I want to recognize and state my unconditional support for the people of Palestine, including any Palestinians living in Canada, given the genocide that they are facing from the state of Israel. I also want to recognize that we live here in the North District of North Vancouver and in fact in all of the North Shore with a large contingent of Persians. And I, it's a terrible tragedy what has happened in Iran. The unsolicited violent attacks by the state of Israel and by the United States and by two of the most evil people that have walked in the face of the earth. Benjamin Netanyahu and certainly Donald Trump. I now go into what I wanted to speak directly to tonight, and that's the OCP revisions. And specifically the plans to densify and continue to densify Lynn Valley. What many of you don't know is why I moved here to the District of North Vancouver. I arrived in 2008 in the lower mainland and I spent the next year and a half looking for a place that I could live in. I say a place that I can live in because I have medical issues, including respiratory problems. And I need to live somewhere where there is as little air pollution and as little air particulate as possible. And I have to tell you that when I moved here in 2009 to the District of North Vancouver, this was the place that, and I have lived in a lot of places, that had the best air quality and the lowest level of air particulate. Period. Anywhere I've lived across actually all of North America and Mexico. Sadly, beginning with the densification which began around 2011 and specifically it got worse once we started to build concrete buildings. The level of air particular increased exponentially. For those that do not know, the number one contributor to greenhouse gases and CO2 emissions is not the car. It's actually concrete buildings and you can look that up. With the increased level of concrete buildings here in Lynn Valley, there's just one measurement that I can use, not a scientific one, but I use it because it's simple. We all understand it. When I moved here in 2009, I could dust my home once a month, whether it needed it or not. Now, if I dust my home at 5:30 in the afternoon, there's a layer of dust across it at nine o'clock the next morning. What I'm seeing with the continued densification and the increase to what I think is called MCRU2 for various properties, we're going to see more concrete buildings here in Lynn Valley. And I can tell you, as soon as the ground breaks for the next one, I'll have to move. I'll have to find another place to live because the air quality here has declined so substantively since I moved here in 2009. This is a serious and unimportant health matter that never gets discussed in development applications nor at public hearings, and I think it needs to be discussed. We need to recognize that by densification and ignoring three quarters of the District of North Vancouver, we are creating health problems for the people that live in places like Lynn Valley and Lynn Creek and of course, the last town center in landscape. Thank you, Mayor Little.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Colbert. Next speaker I have is Nick Petrie. Joining us here in person, welcome. If you come up to the tables here, we'll get a microphone turned on for you. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Speaking on behalf of VW Architecture, which is a architecture firm located in the District of North Vancouver.
I have to ask you to speak nice and loud into that microphone, please. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll do my best. So first I would like to read a letter from our principal architect, Erica Wallwiddick. Dear Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to share these comments with you regarding the official community plan updates and the zoning by law rewrite. Setting aside the provincial mandate for a moment, let's look at what the public really wants. The public wants affordable, livable, reasonably sized housing with access to neighborhood amenities and connections to nature. The District of North Vancouver is poised to give the public what they're asking for and lay the groundwork for positive growth in the growth in the human, excuse me, in the housing sector. Community outreach has shown that public support for scenario three, which is distributed growth. They also show preference to build new homes across the district as a mix of housing forms, desire for diverse housing options and increased affordability, support for more moderate densities and a general preference for distributing growth as opposed to concentrated growth. For decades, condo development and towers have been pushing or pushed as solutions to provide more housing units, essentially a number is game to meet quotas. These have primarily become investment properties, not homes. People don't want to live in four to 600 square foot apartments, especially to raise a family, yet for many young families, this is their only choice to be able to get into the housing market. It should be noted that the condo market has faltered. And continuing to support development of unreasonably small units is a mistake. The public is tired of the micro units and fed up with the lack of affordable, livable home, or sorry, the lack of affordable, livable homes. As you pondered these amendments to the OCP and zoning by law, think about the size of your own homes. Would you want to live in one of these small units in a tower with little or no direct connection to nature? Municipal responses to the provincial mandates with more micro units to meet quotas should be avoided. Towers may still be necessary for some of the development. However, minimum sizes of units should be established to address the concern of investment properties versus homes. The public has clearly stated that they want a variety of more affordable housing options. Small scale multi-unit housing doesn't mean more small apartments. It means the missing middle. It means affordable, reasonably sized housing units distributed throughout the neighborhoods. And as a matter of time, I will just spit my letters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker I have is Shar, joining us virtually. Do we have someone with the name Shar? They're just moving over to the panel. Just be a moment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hello, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes, volume okay?
Yes, all good. Welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shahir Mortazai. My family and I, we've been residents of the District of North Vancouver for 25 plus years. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to also thank district staff for all their hard work and specifically Dennis Wong has answered some questions for me over the last few weeks about the new proposed zoning. And that's what I want to talk about today. Our family home in the District of North Vancouver is zoned RS3 and it's located outside of the urban containment boundary. But like many families in North Vancouver, we are hoping to create a multi-generational home. In the past eight years, we've explored many options like small lot infill area subdividing being one of them. Our ideal is creating a multi-generational home to support aging parents and grandparents and allow us as adults an opportunity to own a home. I appreciate the direction of this zoning review and the efforts to modernize regulations. And I want to raise a few concerns and suggestions. The FSR limits currently make it very difficult to build a true multi-generational home. Even a modest setup with a primary unit, a one bedroom suite and a two bedroom coach house does not fit within the 0.35 FSR limit without exemptions or adjustments.
Did we, can you hear me? Still says we're connected. Shaq, can you hear me? Okay, we're gonna carry on.
I encourage housing. And third, I respect.
You were.
Hello?
Hi, we're gonna get you to repeat your last, your last half minute.
Okay, did you hear about the FSR limitations that I, that I get through that part? Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so my second point was, coach houses still counting towards an FSR is a missed opportunity. The city of Vancouver excludes coach house from FSR in some cases to promote a kind of gentle infill. I encourage the council of the District of North Vancouver to consider a similar exemption or bonus for families that are pursuing intergenerational housing. My third point is, I respectfully suggest council consider special provisions or density bonuses for homeowners explicitly building for multi-generational living, whether through design declarations or zoning overlays. This isn't speculative development. It's about families staying together and aging in place. I also want to share a story that recently aired on CTV that got international recognition. A family in greater Vancouver area on a 66 by 100 foot lot successfully subdivided their home, creating units for each of their children. It was a beautiful example of how housing can serve families across generations. You may have already seen it, Mayor and Council. If you haven't, just on YouTube, search four generations, four homes, one lot, Vancouver family. There's a long format video that gives a full overview. The district is in a position to do something even more tasteful than this, I think. And finally, I want to highlight that many residents in our postal code V7R express strong support for gentle density and multifamily options. Yet the current proposal seems more focused on changes within growth centers. I urge you to look and not overlook families in our areas. We're in a housing crisis and homeownership crisis and North Vancouver is a poster child for generational gap between equity rich homeowner parents and the next generation of children being priced out and having to move far away. I believe this zoning update is a powerful opportunity to bridge that gap. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, sorry, I think we did have some technical difficulties, but I think we got the, the point of your comments along the way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker that I have is Sahar Kito. Welcome. Come on up and have a seat. Yes, just people who are joining the meeting virtually wouldn't hear you otherwise. So yes, we need you to speak into the microphone. Have a seat, get comfortable.
So do I just start like everybody else did? It was very loud.
Welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, starting now?
Go for it.
Okay, very good. I have three kids under the age of eight. And recently, a community planner released a support document for a daycare expansion in our community that fails multiple zoning bylaws and multiple motor vehicle acts. In addition to the fact that she omitted very key information that was discussed at our community meeting. She also inaccurately described where we live. In addition to that, her proposal includes many suggestions that are not inclusive. They are not what daycares need. For example, staggering pickup and drop off times. These only serve people who already have the luxury of making their own schedules. In addition to that, they have suggested that requirements that by law needs in order to rezone and increase numbers from eight to 20, which is what's happening here, can be bypassed using wishful thinking like we will only hire staff that uses the bus. I support using public transportation. I support all three of my children under the age of eight having responsible, reasonable, accessible, affordable childcare, but it must not be at the expense of their safety. It must not be at the expense of the seniors' safety in our neighborhood. It must not be at the expense of other children who are walking to and from our local schools. When I spoke to her directly, she had no knowledge of where Windsor Secondary School was or where Seymour Heights Elementary School was. She has broken by law 7125 for emergency access, section 200.2, by law 7125, section 500.4 in respect to driveways, by law 3210, section 602.3. She has a lack of a community plan. She encourages U-turns in the local school zone at the intersection of Carnation and Berkeley Street, which she admittedly did not know houses a local elementary school. She is also suggesting to break by law motor vehicle act, section 179. I will be speaking tomorrow again on behalf of our community. We oppose 2439 Burton Place adjusting their numbers. It's not safe for anybody, including the children who need care most and especially the residents of the area who want to access their schools and community amenities.
Thank you very much. As you've noted, the, the discussion starts at five o'clock for a public meeting tomorrow night for the issuance of that childcare license. And so if you wish to add your comments at that meeting, you're welcome to.
Yes, there'll be another set of comments at that meeting, more specific. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, there you go. Okay, the next speaker I have is Madeline Campbell. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Madeline Campbell and I'm a parent at Upper Lawnsdale Preschool, which is a parent run nonprofit organization that has been running for over 75 years. I'm also an alumni, having attended this preschool 34 years ago. The positive impact it had on my life influenced my husband and I's decision to move to Upper Lawnsdale so that our children could have the opportunity to experience the magic of this preschool. This past spring, we faced a $38,000 budget shortfall. Thanks to the outpouring of support from families, alumni and local sponsors, we made it through. The North Lawnsdale United Church generously reduced our rent and our dedicated teachers agreed to taking significant pay cuts to keep the doors open. We also had to make the heartbreaking decision to cancel our cherished music program, which had become a cornerstone of the children's experience. We're asking for the district's help to keep our community based program alive. We are so grateful to have received $2,500 last year, but today we are asking for you to increase that amount to the full 8,000. This would allow us the $5,500 needed to reinstate our music program, $500 needed to replace our emergency preparedness kits for the classroom, which are coming up on expiration, and $2,000 to purchase art supplies, materials and equipment for our education and play center. We are no strangers to fundraising. I'm sure many of you have seen us out in the community or had the chance to attend one of our fundraising events. Every dollar raised goes back into the program. In many ways, this is our strength as the group effort builds connection and community. However, we are hoping that you will help us in this financially challenging time. The vibrancy of our community depends on it. Thank you for your time, your support and your commitment to the future of our children and our community.
Very much. Next speaker I have is Cecile. Have you? Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I'm also a parent at Upper Lawnsdale Preschool and as a forward, I get to go in lots of different preschools, daycares and classes for my work. I work with kids with special needs, so it's not likely when I say Upper Lawnsdale Preschool is something special. And when we first moved to North Vancouver with my then two years old daughter, I visited Upper Lawnsdale Preschool twice, the first time to see if I would like it and the second time to register. What struck me most during those two visits was the way the teachers were interacting in such a gentle way with the kids. Both times, the kids were so calm and involved in deep conversation with the teachers. It was amazing to see them paying so much attention and expand on what those three years old were saying. Also, at one point, one child was having an outburst and the way one teacher got closer and gently explained to him what was expected and redirected him to a different activity seemed so smooth and easy. And I know it's definitely not. And it is a play based preschool, which I was looking for. They do process art, which I didn't see in many different places. They do science and experiment and lots of building stuff. But more than that, it's like the teacher really know how to spark the magic of children exploring and discovering by themselves. Every day they create those little nooks with different things, different new things to discover. Sometime I walk in the preschool or their outdoor space and I just wish I could be a child again and go discover those stimulating corners that the teacher creates for them. My kids sometimes have sparkle in their eyes when telling me about their day or the special activity at preschool that day. Also, they have a music class on Thursday with music Ryan, which the kids absolutely love. Unfortunately, they had to momentarily cut that program next year as the budget is so tight. So if you know of any music grants, so we could keep that program running would be awesome. And if you're not convinced yet, I have two more points to make. The first one is the community of parents this preschool creates with all the family activities around the year, with the parent involvement and even the yard cleanups. They are all opportunities to create strong connections in a world where families are sometimes feeling isolated. And here it's the opposite. It's really building that sense of community. And the second and last point is that Upper Lawnsdale Preschool has been running for more than 70 years. Over three generations of kids have come through those doors and parents who themselves, whether cannot wait to have their kids going to Upper Lawnsdale Preschool too. And it's that magic of a place. Thank you for listening and I'm hoping you will give this non-for-profit preschool your full support to keep their door open for the future generation of people that explore us to come in.
Thank you very much for your comments. I just want to be clear about our process. So we have, the council doesn't handle the direct grants in these cases. We have the community services advisory committee that handles the grants for, for these. Thank you for making us aware of the situation, but it is that group that's empowered to do the grants in these cases, but we can follow up and find out what research they've done into your current situation, but they're the body that makes the decision on it. Okay, thank you very much. We still have some time. Would anybody else like to address the council? I see a virtual hand from David Cameron. I'm just going to move you over to the panel. A virtual participant, David Cameron, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Clearly welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you and thank you for your time and for all of the consideration from the council members here today. I just wanted to offer a few comments on the OCP plan updates and the feedback gathered from public consultation. I am a DNV resident with children. This has been my home for the past 10 years and we love living here and we want to continue to be here and support its growth and development. Overall, with the changes that I see staff producing, I am very much in support of moving forwards. We believe this is a positive step towards increased density with an eye towards community development. In particular, I am very much in support of increased density along the Marine Drive corridor. I think it's important to attract support and to build for rapid transit in this corridor. I do hope this change and these changes are done in tandem, or at least with efforts to collaborate with TransLink with these changes in the OCP planning. In particular, as well, I'm also very interested to hear from staff today, or I hope to hear shortly around the new zoning. There are a few new zones that are recommended. I think there's RS6 and 7. I'm sure a few others that I'm not mentioning. I'm very curious if staff has any recommendations towards what the FSR would be in these areas. I very much look forward to a DNV that is multi-generational friendly, whether that involves single family lots as well as a diverse set of housing options for residents as well as transit and roads and everything else that will be able to attract the labor to support local business in this community. So thank you guys.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, would anybody else like to address the council at this time? Unfortunately, you've already spoken, so you will have an opportunity to speak at the public meeting tomorrow. It's, it's public input, period. If you have a question, you can talk to staff at one of the breaks. Okay? Any other people wishing to speak? Okay, I believe we've completed the public input for this evening, so I'm going to move on with this evening's agenda. Okay, so next up this evening, we have a delegation. And so at this point, I'm going to welcome up the delegation from the Orange Shirt Society. If you guys come up to the table. While they're getting settled in, the difference between the delegation and regular public input is delegation can come from a society or an organization with the community to come and inform the council about activities going on within their organization. They have five minutes to provide a presentation and then there's an opportunity for council to ask follow-up questions after that. So it's a little bit different than our normal input, a bit of an extra opportunity to dig a little deeper into an issue. So today we are welcoming Shannon Henderson and Anna McKenzie from the Orange Shirt Society. What it says, but if you want to introduce your group, that'd be great.
Yeah, Anna McKenzie is not with us presently.
Okay.
So Hut Squail Tenoyep Tukunisna, Shannon Henderson, Slay Waloat is my ancestral name. I am a proud member of the Squamish Nation and I am a former board president of the Orange Shirt Society, but now the chief operating officer for the Orange Shirt Society. Today with me, I have.
My name is Vanessa Gonzalez. I'm a member of Slaypotuff Nation and I'm also a staff member of Slaypotuff as a community engagement manager. I'm part of the working group that is looking to bring this project to fruition. And we work closely with our elders committee, our Indian Residential School Society project leads, and I'm excited to bring this back.
And also with us today, I have Mary Gerges, who is a former board president, board member of the Orange Shirt Society and also the vice president of our consulting with changemakers. So she's here with us today. So. Why are we here today? We're here to discuss the mark of the upcoming installation of.
why are we here today? We're here to discuss the mark of the upcoming installation of the Every Child Matters Crosswalk in the heart of Slay With Tooth Nation along Dollerton Highway. This installation is scheduled for early September of 2025. We've already began the planning with your fantastic team at the district with Kayla and Lee. We have partnered with us on this initiative. On that day too, we're looking to do a special ceremony of the unveiling and having our founder and CEO Phyllis Webster in presence with us. I'm just going to put my glasses on so I can read it better. This crosswalk is a part of a growing national movement, Paint Canada Orange. To date, we have installed 11 crosswalks across Canada. The first one was in Kitchener, Ontario. And the other one was in the city of Williams Lake, home to our head office and our founder, Phyllis Webster. The other one is in New West Minister at Hayek Square in 2023. This is just to name a few. The vision, each crosswalk is a visible lasting symbol of remembrance and reconciliation. It is designed to keep the conversation going about the history and the legacy of the Indian residential schools. These installations are not just about honoring the past. They are about awareness and education, the present and shaping the future of reconciliation. We're also too proud to share that the city of North Vancouver and the city of Vancouver has approved our plan to install another Every Child Matters Crosswalk on Six of Forbes and Main and Hastings in 2025 and 2027. The Squamish, Musqueam and Slay With Tooth Nations fully support this project, this project, which serves as a powerful symbol and unity and remembrance in one of the city's most visible intersections. Every Child Matters is more than a slogan. It's a call to action. It reminds us that every child, regardless of a background, deserves to be seen, heard and valued. It honors the children who never returned home from residential schools and it deference the worth of those who survived. For many of us, this message is deeply personal. I'm the 60-scoop survivor. My mother, aunties and uncles attended residential school all over BC along with Vanessa's family. We're actually cousins. The truths and the stories of so many others and why do, why do we do this work? These crosswalks are a way to ensure that those stories are never forgotten and that the future generations grow up in a country that acknowledged its past and commits to doing better. And here is in this very place, they were two children as young as six years old once walked every day to and from St. Paul's Indian Residential School. That's 13 kilometers, eight miles round trip. That school is now known as St. Thomas Aquinas, holds painful memories for families. This crosswalk stands as a reminder to those daily journeys and those strength and resilience of those children and their descendants. We're excited, also excited to share that we're planning a special event for Orange Shirt Day and National Day of Truth and Reconciliation on September 30th in 2026. Our vision is to host a community march from Slay With Tooth Nation to Squamish Nation ending at Six and Forbes where another crosswalk will be installed on 20, September 2025. This march will honor our residential school survivors and bring communities together in a powerful act of remembrance and unity. We welcome you to walk with us, to listen, open hearts, to learn humility and to show your support in truth and reconciliation. This crosswalk is more than a symbol. It's a path of remembrance, a place of reflection and a promise to future generations. When people walk across it, we hope they pause. We hope they reflect on the children who walked much harder roads. Some as young as six years old from Slay With Tooth to St. Paul's. And most importantly, we hope that they carry the message for that every child truly does matter. We'll see him.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Counselor Murray, you have some
I'll move.
Move receipt. Counselor Hanson, are you seconding receipt? Thank you very much. Counselor Murray, your comments, please, and questions, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and this is an incredible tribute to that dark history. And it does, it will continue to, the orange shirts are synonymous with this, obviously, and they, and the whole program has taken off like wildfire over the last many years. So we all know what orange reflects. Can you share with us a little bit more? I was wondering if there was any more slides. And I was gonna say, should we be advancing something? Usually on a PowerPoint words, but can you share some pictures of where the crosswalk's going to be put?
Yes.
In?
Sorry, I got nervous.
That's okay.
Started reading and then I got emotional.
Of course.
Right there.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Okay, that's great.
So I can give you a little bit of an update about this design. Same with Vanessa. So this design is a Slay With Tooth member Candy Thomas. So these are her designs and then we had talked about having the orange go right across Dollerton as well. So it aligns it all together.
Okay. And is there any, have you discussed with staff, because it is a crosswalk and it's a busy area? Have we discussed with staff in regards to a pedestrian activated signal in that area? Does it warrant pedestrian activated signal? Just curious, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, so through the mayor, we can certainly go away and look at that. The priority right now is to look at the crosswalk design and trying to get it in place before September 30th this year. And staff have been working with your own shirt society. We can certainly take that comment away.
Okay, I think it's, given that it's a crosswalk and it is such a busy area. I think you should certainly look into that and we'll have staff assist in that regard. You know what I'm talking about, the, the, just the flashing posts. Not necessarily in overhead, but those flashing posts, we've installed those in many areas. There is a bit of a queue. But I think it's something that we should absolutely consider. Thank you for your presentation. I look forward to the unveiling of this very important crosswalk in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Murray. Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Your Worship. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Vanessa. This is obviously very important work that you're engaging in and it is very meaningful to us to know that that crosswalk is in that location in your nation and in the district as a result of being in your nation. Your message is extremely important, obviously. And I will, for one, make a good note of the, the activity that you have suggested for Orange Shirt Day on September 30th in my diary. So thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions or comments at this time? Okay, receipts been moved and seconded. I'll call the question. All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Thank you very much for your presentation and sharing your progress with us. Thank you.
You just take this all off. Do you want my notes?
Thank you. Okay, all right. Moving along with this evening's agenda, we're moving on to reports from councilor staff. The first item up for discussion is not discussion, it is for consideration for adoption. This is item 8.1, Street Naming Bylaw 8735 2025, Marie Place. And there it is for adoption, so there's no discussion on the matter. It's been moved by Counselor Murray, seconded by Counselor Ma, prepared to call the question. All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. The next item up for discussion is item 8.2, Increase to Length of Stay Short-Term Rentals and Bed and Breakfasts. This item is returning to us for, or coming to us for first, second and third reading. The council previously had waived, I believe, a public hearing on this matter. And it follows up with a very recent decision we, we made to implement short-term rental and bed and breakfast updates to our policies to run in line with the provincial policies. We've recognized excuse me, I'm about to sneeze. We'll see. We recognize that in that process that we didn't have entirely the same dates restrictions, whether it was a 28-day cap on stay or whether it was the full stay that was permitted. And so this effort was a follow-up to that discussion in order for us to consider coming into line with other communities. I don't have an explicit staff report on the matter, but do we have any comment from staff? We're well aware of the issue.
Your worship, we've taken council's direction, reflected on the bylaw before you staff are able to answer any questions, counsel.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hanson, your top of power, was that from the last item?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Murray, you have a motion. Okay, is there a second on the matter? Second by Counselor Back. Counselor Murray, any further discussion?
I know, Mayor Little, I think this lines us up with the city of North Vancouver too, which is important in regards to bylaws such as these. I think it also reflects the, the film industry that uses a longer length of time when they're filming in the community. It's an important scenario of housing for people that are coming up from the states or outside of the province, and I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Back, any follow-up? A similar situation, I think that having a closer alignment with our neighbors on this type of thing makes some sense and so I'm glad we've been able to fast-track bringing this forward and look forward to it being implemented. Counselor Ma, your comments?
Yes, just a question to staff and I apologize if I missed in a report. When is it coming back for adoption?
Do we have to refer this to the province?
Oh, looking to the clerk to see if we've got a date specified as soon as possible, I think is the intention.
The date will likely be July 7.
July 7th is the intended return date, so you'll have to wait until the agendas are released that week to verify it, but that's our intent. Any additional comments, Counselor Ma? Counselor Hanson, I saw your hand. Go back up.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I just wish to emphasize this matter has been discussed in some detail at previous deliberations of this council and in public hearings on this issue. And there was clear community support and expression of a need for these short-term rentals, which are longer than 28 days and less than 90 days. So this fills that gap in the, the bylaw scheme that we created and brings it into conformity, not only with the North Vancouver scheme, as noted by Counselor Murray, but also the province-wide short-term rental plan that was set out by the provincial government. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Counselor Murray, see you up for a second.
Mayor Little, I'm just wondering if staff can update us in regards to the business license applications that were sort of put under the gun in regards to this legislation and the timeframe. And I'm just wondering what kind of queue we still got remaining. If there's any update as to how we're working through that.
Ms. Adams?
Through your worship, we have received about 330 business license applications so far, of which about 100 are approved. So staff are working their way through.
Are we going to make that deadline?
That's the goal. There might also be opportunity to have it extended, but staff are working diligently to get through those applications quickly.
Okay, and anything sticking out that needs to be of concern or?
Not so far.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. See no further speakers from council. I'm prepared to call the question. All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. All right, on to one of the bigger items for discussion tonight. This is item 8.3, the OCP Update, Public Engagement Summary and Refined Scenario. When you're comfortable, actually, I'm going to go to Mr. Milburn's opening comments and then on to Mr. Smith, Mr. Milburn.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Your Worship Members of Council. The province created a Homes for People Action Plan in early 2023, which was followed by a series of legislative changes that have fundamentally altered how municipalities in BC plan, finance and regulate residential growth. The district has responded to these challenges by amending certain bylaws, reassessing our housing needs, updating our financial tools and reporting our progress towards provincially established residential development targets. This work is ongoing and tonight's staff report and presentation is a critical step toward providing for our future housing needs in the official community plan or OCP, while reinforcing the growth management vision and policies of that plan. One of the many impactful new pieces of legislation is the Housing Supply Act, which gives the provincial government the power to set housing targets for specific municipalities and take action if those targets are not met. The ministerial order for the District of North Vancouver requiring at least 2,838 new housing units be built between September 2023 and 2028 was subsequently issued by the Minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs. While the district achieved the first-year implementation target of approximately 500 built units, headwinds in the current housing market may make achieving future targets more challenging. After receiving the housing target order, the district communicated to the minister that to achieve the province's proposed housing targets within the proposed timeframe, the district will need funding from senior levels of government, including funding from infrastructure for infrastructure such as regional transportation and transit and utilities and funding for new social and supportive housing units. This same message has been consistently communicated by district staff to the provincial ministries and agencies that engage with the district. This is because housing growth at the rate and scale anticipated by the province will require an equal level of planning effort and investment for the infrastructure needed for future residents, whether it be municipal, regional or provincial infrastructure. After the Housing Supply Act was introduced, the province went on to approve Bill 44, the Housing Statutes Residential Development Amendment Act, which is why we are here tonight. Despite the limited timeline provided by the, provided to the district, staff have worked tirelessly with council's direction to first prepare infill housing options within traditional single-family neighborhoods, which resulted in a significant amendment to the zoning bylaw in June of 2024 that allowed for a principal home, secondary suite and a coach house on each single-family lot within the urban containment boundary. Looking at progress on this initiative to date, I note the district has received six coach house applications over the last year. Second, with council's direction, a new interim housing needs report was prepared using the provincially mandated methodology, which identified the need for approximately 22,400 new units over a 20-year period between 2021 and 2041, which was approved by council in October 2024. Third, the Development Cost Charge bylaw was updated and a new amenity cost charge bylaw was created, which are both critical tools for financing growth. Finally, council provided staff with direction to prepare options detailing how the district could provide for the anticipated housing demand in a manner consistent with the established urban structure in the official community plan, which directs 75 to 90% of new residential units to the four key growth centers, Lions Gate Marine Drive, Lynn Creek, Lynn Valley and Maplewood. Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith's subsequent presentation will therefore present the culmination of staff's efforts to fulfill council's prior direction. But before Mr. Smith delivers his presentation, I'd just like to quickly express my gratitude for council's continued clear direction and support for staff to undertake this challenging work within the limited timeframe set by the province. I would also like to extend my gratitude and appreciation to all staff teams in the organization who helped with this effort and I'm grateful for their time and comprehensive advice and passionate community-centered approach. And finally, I would like to thank the thousands of community members who have engaged with the district on this important topic over the past 14-plus years with the OCP's development and implementation and this most recent OCP Options Review effort focused on how council can best allocate approximately 22,400 units within the district. This work is ongoing and tonight's presentation and council consideration is a critical step in this, in this process. Staff look forward to receiving direction from council tonight before returning proposed bylaw amendments to council for consideration this fall. Thank you, Your Worship, and I'd now like to introduce Mr. Jason Smith, Senior Planner, who will provide tonight's staff presentation. Thank you, Worship.
Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Through the chair, I will have a brief
We're gonna get your microphone on the other one here. I got it. Go for it.
You get to go. All right, there we are. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milburn, for those introductory comments. As mentioned, my name's Jason Smith. I'm a senior community planner and I'm here tonight to present the public engagement summary and a refined land use scenario as it relates to the official community plan update. As Mr. Milburn alluded to, there was a series of bills introduced by the province in late 2023.
Uh, as Mr. Milburn alluded to, uh, there was a series of bills, uh, introduced by the province in late 2023 and the spring of 2024, amending the Local Government Act and introducing significant changes to, uh, planning legislation uh, that governs, uh, land use and development application decisions, uh, in municipalities. Uh, tonight, uh, we will be focusing on, uh, implementing some of the requirements of Bill 44 and particularly, uh, to provide for the 20 year housing need in both our O C P and zoning bylaws. And that has been the ongoing focus for this O C P update. Uh, council, uh, began this, uh, project, uh, in, at July 15th, where they established the scope for the, uh, O C P update, primarily focused on accommodating and providing for that 20 year housing need within the existing urban structure that Mr. Milburn mentioned. Uh, this followed in September, uh, with the endorsement of an engagement plan on how we would communicate about, uh, the proposed O C P update and introduce the idea of, uh, the three land use concepts or scenarios that formed the basis of the public consultation that we will be summarizing here, uh, that took place in the spring. Uh, the interim housing needs was represented to council, uh, in October of last year, establishing that 20 year housing need of about 22,400 units, uh, over to the 20 year period. And in February of this year, staff presented council with three land use scenarios that introduced some concept of how, uh, the district might, uh, accommodate that housing need uh, within the urban structure, again, about 75 to 90% growth in key centers. And that, uh, engagement, uh, took place through the month of April this year and we'll go into a bit more detail about that. By way of brief refresher, the three scenarios, uh, that were, uh, introduced in February and formed the basis for the public engagement, scenario one, that looked to focus 90% of growth in our four key growth centers within the existing center boundaries. Uh, so this would result in kind of higher density and taller building forms. The second scenario, uh, was what we called the expanded center. So again, that 90% of growth into the four key growth areas, uh, but with expanding the, some of the center boundaries where it was possible to do that. And finally, the third scenario was a distributed growth, uh, scenario that looked to have 75 and then 20, 75% of growth within the key, uh, four key growth centers and then 25 outside, uh, 25% growth outside of centers, predominantly in village centers and some of the quarters that do have some transit center. As you move across the various scenarios, it introduced various forms of housing through kind of how we, we introduced density into the community. So beginning in the spring, uh, we did, and ramped up a pretty significant outreach to engage the public uh, and bring them into, uh, the conversation through various means. You can see many of them listed here. Uh, many members of council and we had great turnout at many of the events, uh, some open houses. Uh, we also did, uh, a survey, which was kind of one of the key, uh, tools for garnering, uh, people's perspectives on how to proceed. And we had a pretty good turnout. Uh, as many of you will remember, the spring was kind of a hectic time with a lot going on in the world. But nonetheless, we had, uh, quite good, uh, turnout at many of the, the events. We had almost a thousand, uh, surveys completed. Uh, we did also, in addition to the public engagement, continue our work with our interest holders, consulting with, uh, groups such as the school district, translink, our neighboring municipalities and of course, ongoing, uh, robust conversations with our First Nation partners as well. All form the basis of this engagement and will continue as we move forward. Uh, the, the full engagement summary is, is attached, uh, as attachment one to the report, but a few kind of key highlights that I wanted to touch base on, that kind of led to the formation in part of the refined scenario that presenting here tonight. Uh, scenario three, so that distributed growth model with the 75 and 25% uh, split, uh, was the one that was, had the most preference within the survey results, uh, 62% rated that good or very good. Uh, so that kind of spoke to some of the, uh, what we perceived and through our discussions in the public around the idea of, you know, maybe we, the community didn't want to see the taller, um, forms of housing and wanted a bit more diversity in terms of housing forms within the community. So that's something we took away and considered in developing the refined scenario. Secondly, the expanded centers, uh, was the second most preferred scenario. Uh, this looked again at expanding the centers and as a result brought down some of that intensity of the density within, uh, centers and introduced again that variety of housing forms. So that again was a kind of a key idea that we tried to bring forward in the refined scenario. And then finally, scenario one, the concentrated growth, uh, was the least preferred scenario. Uh, but still garnered 40% people of respondents feeling that that was a very good or good idea to implement. So again, that focus of growth in centers, perhaps, uh, to support transit and some of the alternatives to, uh, vehicles that that would enable. In terms of some of the survey results, uh, see some of the kind of the key highlights here. Again, that help inform some of our work in developing the refined scenario that I'll present here shortly. Uh, 68% of our respondents indicated that they preferred new homes across the district. So again, that variety of housing in different locations and in different forms. Uh, similarly, we had 84% of respondents state that they prefer new homes near major transit. So we saw this as kind of a strong support for that urban structure, uh, and locating 75 to 90% growth in those four key growth centers, so that the major transit and major future major transit investment could, could access and utilize those people living close by. And then finally, we had some discussions and directions around the forms of affordable housing that the community would like to see. We also surveyed on the top priorities and this reflected what we've heard in the past through other engagement initiatives that the district has undertaken. So strong reinforcement of, of information, uh, that I don't think would be a surprise to anybody in this room. Uh, transportation and transit infrastructure is significant priorities for, uh, the community. Uh, and that is a critical, uh, part of the land use plan and what's driving the refined scenario as well. Uh, the delivery of more housing options and affordable housing is another key priority for the community. Provision of public services, both what is provide, uh, provided by the municipality, but also, uh, provincial services such as healthcare and schools are seen as critical, uh, to, uh, for the community. Uh, and that is in part why we've seen them as implementation partners and have had those conversations with the school district and V C H about the work we're undertaking. And finally, community amenities, uh, we have complete communities. That's a, one of the main goals of, uh, our initiatives here when it comes to community planning, delivering great recreation centers, parks and other men, amenities that make life great, living on the North Shore. So these again were items that we would consider in terms of how we implemented and developed the refined scenario, what might best deliver on some of these priorities. So as I've been mentioning, we've developed a refined scenario. We considered public feedback, considered the requirements of the provincial legislation. We considered council's direction to implement and maintain the O C P vision around that urban structure with the four key growth centers and further technical analysis with the variety of the skills and expertise that exists within the district, uh, and on our consulting team. And we developed a refined scenario that had kind of four, three key tenants, one that it accommodates the 20 year housing need. It maintains the urban structure as council is directed and it integrates as best as possible public preferences. So as we introduced the, the refined scenario here, we chose to use kind of the conceptual map that we used to introduce the scenarios as part of the public engagement. So I'm trying to provide some continuity as we bring kind of the picture of how we would like to move forward into clearer focus. So one of the key, uh, proposals underpinning the refined scenario is, uh, utilizing, uh, 75% of, uh, growth, future growth into our four key growth centers. So still maintaining that strong focus on the centers and the efficiencies and then support for transit that that garners. And then 25% of growth outside of centers, uh, in various, uh, forms, particularly in our village centers and some of our key corridors. And I'll go into a bit more detail of how we've implemented some of, uh, the few two, or how we have chosen to accommodate the growth. Looking first at Lions Gate Marine Drive Village Center. One of the ideas we incorporated was expanding the centers. So this was to kind of pick up on what we've heard from the public and the community about wanting to reduce the intensity of growth in our centers and expanding the centers allowed us to spread the density out somewhat and introduce a variety of housing forms in the centers. Uh, so we are expanding the, the center, the, to the east or to the left side is that kind of little small area is the current Lions Gate. And we're proposing to expand it to include the Marine Drive corridor in its entirety and expand that Marine Drive corridor boundary north to in essence, the escarpment, uh, that forms the boat at the bottom of Pemberton Heights and then along 15th Street, uh, to the south. We're also introducing, uh, some apartment districts within that area to the north of Marine Drive. Uh, this again is, you know, picking up on that notion of locating, uh, people near transit, a key driver and key interest that we heard from the public and also one of the key, addressing some of the key issues we have in the community around transit and trying to support future transit investment. Similarly, we've introduced a six story apartment, uh, designations to the south of Marine Drive as well and to the north of 15th Street there again, trying to put people close to transit in our centers. We're also proposing to, uh, redesignate a pocket of R S, R E S two, uh, to R E S five, uh, so low density apartments uh, in the north section of Lions Gate as well. Another, uh, item that we also consulted on during, uh, the month of April was the notion of introducing multiplexes in some of the single family neighborhoods where there was the service and infrastructure to support that. Uh, we heard some support for that ideas from the, the public. So we are proposing as part of this refined scenario to introduce in certain neighborhoods, uh, the possibility of multiplexes. So that four units on an existing single family, no, so that'd be an increase from what you can do today of one unit. Uh, so Pemberton Heights and Norgate are both areas that we're proposing, uh, to introduce multiplex, uh, zoning. Moving on to Lynn Valley Town Center, this is another, uh, center where we are proposing to expand, uh, the boundary of the center as it exists today. As you can see there, this would encompass some of the higher density developments such as Kiwanis that have taken place recently to include that within the center and also Karen Magnuson and Kirkstone Park, just to round out kind of a complete community within the urban center boundaries. We're also proposing, uh, to change some of the land use designations, uh, within the center itself. Uh, so for the Lynn Valley Mall site or where the, the Dairy Queen is and the, uh, Petro Canada on the corner of Mountain Highway and Lynn Valley Road, uh, redesignating some of the properties in that vicinity from R E S five and six to a mixed use designation, C R M U two. Along the Mountain Highway Corridor, uh, up, uh, redesignating some of the transitional, uh, and low density multifamily apartments on the east side, uh, to, uh, six story apartment designation, uh, some of the existing, uh, R, R E S six designations within the heart of Lynn Valley, changing those to a same, same density, but changing them to a mixed use and, uh, designation to allow for, uh, some of the goals around economic development and expanded commercial opportunities in our centers. Also looking at, uh, some of the transitional and low density apartment areas, uh, on the area east or on the, yes, sorry, the, uh, west side of, uh, Lynn Valley along 29th, changing that again to a six story, R E S six designation. Moving further along 29th, uh, staff are also proposing, uh, the introduction of a townhouse designation along that corridor you see there around 29th, uh, so again, offering some of those, uh, housing options and housing choices with close to the centers. And then again, uh, the refined scenario proposes to introduce the notion of multiplexes and some of the single family neighborhoods on the periphery of Lynn Valley. Moving back down, uh, to the southern portion of the district at Lynn Creek, uh, there's geographic constraints there. So we were not able to expand the centers, uh, but we did find opportunities to, uh, accommodate some of the, the growth. And again, in that key location where there will be, uh, anticipated future transit investment and next to existing transit investment with regards to FIBS exchange. Uh, so up, up, up designating from C R M U one to three, uh, in a line with the, the transit oriented areas legislation as well. Uh, the, those mixed use properties there, uh, going from C R M U one to three. Along the Orwell Corridor, uh, there was mention of the R E S seven, uh, designation. This is the only new land use designation we're proposing to introduce. Uh, this would be again, kind of a medium density apartment designation, uh, moving from an R E S six designation, which currently has a 2.5 F S R, the R E S seven would have a 3.0 F S R. Also looking on the, um, east side of Mountain Highway, introducing some more mixed use designations where there's just currently pure residential designations. Again, trying to build that core part of the, uh, center and enhancing that commercial corridor that's developing there. Finally, moving on to our last center, Maplewood. Uh, redesignating the apartment zone just to the south of the elementary school from R E S six to R E S seven. And then in another area, uh, Wainridge, I believe it's called, uh, moving that from a low density apartment to an R E S six, which would deliver a six story form apartments typically. So that's a brief summary of some of the, the changes and the big moves we're proposing on our centers. In addition to this, this is the distributed growth, uh, ideas that we saw in scenario three that resonated with, uh, many members of the public. Uh, so we are seeing, uh, proposing, uh, slight increases with some townhouse designations in Edgemont, uh, along Queens Road in Queenstown itself and also, uh, some redesignations in the Park Gate area as well. You'll also note that Keith Lynn is another neighborhood, not near one of our centers, but we felt was an appropriate, uh, place to consider, uh, the introduction of multiplexes as well. So that rounds out the, uh, kind of the conceptual notions of how we were, would like to propose a, a refined scenario to accommodate, uh, the district's 20 year housing need, really building off that urban structure, focusing the growth near centers and where we've planned for infrastructure and also trying to capture and reflect what we've heard, uh, during the public engagement period. So summing this up in terms of what it means for the scenarios and kind of capturing it in kind of some of the current context as well. You'll see in this chart, each of the centers, uh, and the number of units that are in those centers. So the blue colors, the darker blue is the units that exist already. And then the lighter blue, the smaller bands there are kind of in-stream, uh, development applications to kind of at the building permit stage. So these are units that we are going to utilize in a short order in the centers. Uh, the orange color is reflects the remaining capacity under the current O C P. And then finally, the yellow bars on top reflect the additional, uh, capacity that we are proposing to add under the refined scenario. That is again, in an effort to accommodate our 20 year housing need in the best locations, uh, and in alignment with the O C P, uh, structure. And then finally, bringing this, uh, further along, uh, and bringing the picture further in the focus, this is the land use map. So this was, in essence, is attachment three to the report, uh, and it reflects, uh, draft land use designations for the properties. So this would enable, uh, people to be able to see specifically which properties we are proposing under the refined scenario to redesignate in the O C P and should council choose to move forward with the refined scenario, this would form the basis of the bylaws that we would bring forward in the fall. Our work is not happening in legis-, uh, in isolation. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of housing need on the North Shore and the provincial legislation certainly applies to our neighboring municipalities. You can see here, the District of West Vancouver, uh, has a housing need, 20 year housing unit of almost 11,000 units. And the city of North Vancouver has a very similar housing need to the district of, uh, 21,300 units. Uh, this is in addition to, uh, some of the units that are proposed or that we are anticipating, uh, on our First Nations partners in the, on the North Shore, both the Squamish, uh, are kind of envisioning somewhere between five, 5,000 new units and the, the Swale Tooth have proposed, uh, just over 2,000 units, uh, on their lands. Now it's important to kind of have a sense of where our current O C P i- is at. Uh, this is a map of the current land use designations in the O C P. Uh, and in the report, there is a detail about both the existing, uh, capacity in the O C P, which you can see there, and the current capacity in our zoning bylaw, which is a key question that we're trying to address, uh, through this O C P update. And you'll see, we do have quite a bit of significant capacity, but it is predominantly 80% of it is in our single family neighborhoods and outside of our, 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 our four key centers. And that's an important consideration in terms of wanting to realize our O C P vision and all the planning that underpins that to support that growth in the right locations. And with the changes that council introduced, uh, to allow for coach houses and suites in all single family neighborhoods within the urban containment boundary, uh, there was this, you know, quite a bit of capacity added in kind of a theoretical sense. And our analysis in developing this refined scenario and looking at how, uh, the community will evolve, it was very clear to us that we will not be able to meet our housing need through change, uh, in, in single family neighborhoods alone. That capacity, uh, simply will not, while there theoretically will not be, is not realistic or realizable. We've looked at kind of historical redevelopment patterns in our single family neighborhoods. We roughly get 10 to 20 a year, uh, so that will not in any way, uh, move the needle in terms of accommodating our 20 year housing needs going forward. And also in the absence of having that capacity and signaling and supporting the O C P vision, it undermines and kind of works across purposes to our efforts to support transit investment, uh, with our partners and with, uh, senior levels of governments, uh, redevelopment in single family neighborhoods will not provide affordable housing. Uh, it will. It will introduce a bit of diversity. And more importantly, kind of in the absence of having that capacity and support for the O C P, O C P vision. It makes it challenging to deliver efficient and economical infrastructure servicing, single family neighborhoods. And if we were to accommodate most of our growth through the redevelopment of that would be the most inefficient way to provide services for the for this community. In terms of the timeline and next steps, should council choose to endorse the staff recommendation and move forward with the refined scenario? Staff would begin drafting bylaws through the summer and into September with the intention of introducing those bylaws in the fall. And moving forward with the public hearing process in order to meet our legislated deadline of December 31st, 2025. During that time also, we are proposing to undertake what we call phase three of the public engagement. We recognize, you know, the some of the challenges we have in terms of the timing and that nobody likes to do consultation through the summer. So our intention wouldn't to be of doing if council chooses to move forward, a very light touch of putting the information you see here a bit more prominently on our website. And making it available for people to comment. And we would follow that up in early to mid September with a series of open houses and a bit more fulsome engagement on what is being posed here. So that the public has an opportunity to see the direction that council has directed staff to move forward. Into those eventual bylaw amendments that would be introduced later in the fall. And so my last slide, the recommendation for consideration tonight is that council direct staff to develop the necessary O C P and zoning bylaw amendments to implement the refined scenario. Thank you, staffer available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm not. Not quite there yet as far as being supportive of this. I think the I I attended a couple of workshops and asked a lot of questions. It was a very interesting, good material, chatted with a wider number of people that attended there. I think there was an option that needs to be presented alongside that wasn't really presented as an option in those meetings. They were given the options for scenario, one, two, three different growth options in there. But there wasn't a discussion about what minimal compliance would look like, which is basically recognizing. That the provincial government is requiring us to meet a certain number. And what would be the minimum way for us to comply with that number? And I think that we need to put those two out there so the community knows we can be honest about what the impact is going to be and say. You're going to have a difficult time producing affordability, you may have some challenges producing the infrastructure necessary for this. And it may not be staff's recommended, but I think the community, this is a political decision the community needs to to make. And so what I would put forward as a motion is that staff prepare bylaws for the refined scenario. As well as bylaws for a minimal compliance status quo option for the council to consider in the fall. Is is that? Can I bifurcate? Yes, I can. Okay, but I I need a seconder on the whole thing you can you can vote for or against things afterwards. I just need a seconder on, thank you very much for discussion. Happy to, it's recognizing that we already comply with the provincial requirements. With the bulk of the units in our current and existing O C P. So if you can scroll back to that slide that shows the orange bar, yellow bar, blue bar there. And so. These numbers here don't actually reflect the true situation because they don't include the numbers from outside of the town centers. And so if you include the additional density and dwelling units that this council's already approved in the single family areas. Then you actually already comply with the provincial legislation with the orange component of these bars. Is that fair and accurate, Mr. Milburn?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, we anticipated a question with respect to how units could be accommodated within the single family neighborhoods in essence. And so maybe if I could just get Mr. Smith to pull up, I think we have a have a slide that can kind of show a comparison. Of if we were to anticipate taking the anticipated growth instead of being in centers and council were to choose to identify that growth outside of centers. This is essentially the number of units that would be planned then to be accommodated. It would be 6,000 units of suites, new suites and coach houses outside of the centers within the single family neighborhoods.
So we already have the ability to accommodate the growth required from the province in our existing O C P with our existing town center plan. What we wouldn't be able to achieve is the ratio of units in town centers to outside of town centers. That the council has directed staff to try to achieve in the in the plan. But I think that recognizing that we have no commitments from the provincial government for infrastructure to our community. We have no commitment from them for a medium term replacement of the secondary's bridge that is not meeting our needs today, let alone into the future. And all of the other things that feed into this from an infrastructure perspective. I think that we need to put this option forward to the community rather than over complying. Coming forward with a density of total number of additional dwelling units that is way beyond what we're required to do under the provincial legislation. Which is what scenarios one, two and three actually reflect because they don't trade out units and dwelling spaces that are already into the single family areas. And the reason why I'm I'm really hesitant about this is, and then incidentally, council can at any time in future. If there's an interesting project, we can do a site redevelopment of that that project and and identify the benefits of that project at that time. But my my challenge is the. The the growth projections that we have, some of them I will go as so far as to say they're a bit fictitious. So the province released a report last year saying that we were going to grow to 7.9 million people by 2046. We're nowhere near being on track to that. In fact, in the first quarter of this year, we 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 lost people. We had a net out migration of about 3,000 people. I have to wait a week to find out the second quarter numbers, they're going to be similar at a time when we were supposed to go up about 100,000 people. And so the growth projections from the province are completely out of line with what's actually happening. And yet it's the catalyst for all of the decisions we make. I sit on the water committee, it's determining our water consumption and investment into new pipes and distribution systems. Within solid ways, within liquid waste of Metro Vancouver, it's predicated on a significant amount of growth, the population of the North Shore going up to 350,000 people. The transit infrastructure pieces are all again predicated on us going to 7.9 million people by 2046. Which we are nowhere near charted to go to. And so I I. The the market has put their pencils down, they've decided that they're not progressing with projects because of the instability in the market. They can't get their pre-sales going. And so almost every major development is on hold effectively. And yet we still keep marching towards this totally fictitious number of growth out to 2046. And I don't understand why there isn't a revision of that. And in the interim time, until we see a correction on that and it's federal policy that sets how fast we grow. Our our natural birth rates only hanging out around 1% as a as a country and almost everything else is coming through immigration refugee programs and everything else. And so in my view, it we're going to be nowhere near those growth targets. And and so we need to come up with a more modest plan that represents reasonable growth in the community tying infrastructure to that growth. And so ultimately, at the end, I think there's a lot of interesting things in the refined scenario. There's some neighborhoods that definitely we should be looking at transit improvements for transit purposes, not because we're trying to meet some fictitious growth target. From the provincial government. And so I think the discussion we should have, the fulsome discussion should be about. Refined scenario as presented by you and minimal compliance or as close to our current status quo of our O C P as possible. And so that's my motion, it's been seconded by councillor Murray. Councillor Murray, you're the second on the motion, would you like to speak?
I I will. Council, this is the province's vision, not the communities. We have never been in a more precarious time than in the last five years. Our community and financial sustainability is at risk. We are being asked to implement thousands of unplanned units that will rapidly accelerate real estate speculation. To ensure the provincial government's mandate of solving housing crisis. However, it is not units that is the crisis that has already been debunked by the thousands that sit empty. It is affordability and vast amounts of units envisioned in this document are market units and will not make a dent on the cost or the market value. 50 story towers will not solve the affordability, the affordability issue. Taxes will only rise. Further, regardless of what kind of unit we look at, deep dive or market, infrastructure needs to be paid for. And the tax payers fear is reaching their limit in most in the most unaffordable region in the world. Where is the plan to pay for transit, utility, services and facilities, the boots on the ground that maintain our assets? Where is the financial plan other than raising taxes to accommodate this unplanned and irresponsible level of growth in communities that are already struggling to stay ahead? Supply and demand has not worked and the idea that development pays for development is a myth. The city of Burnaby once able to claim zero debt has recently depleted their billion dollar reserves with five major projects coming in $300 million over budget. Burnaby has absorbed and occupied 11,000 units since 2021 and has had a tax increase of 5.8% for 2025. Although density like Brentwood concentrates the cost, there are still hundreds of millions of dollars being absorbed by the taxpayer because development only picks up a portion. And even that is surpassing the developer's ability to pass it on to the buyer. D N V example, Lynn Creek Community Recreation Centre developer played 9.4 million to build the shell, which included a $2.5 million C A C reserve contribution from the district. District, the fit out was 9.8 million funded through a $3.4 million D N V C A C plus a $6.4 million contribution from our infrastructure reserves. There is no free ride. If a community like Burnaby is increasing their tax base exponentially and they're having problems, how are we to survive? Unlike Burnaby, we only have two ways onto the North Shore, both over a body of water. How much is it going to cost? What will the tools be? How do we acquire the rights of way for transit? How much will that cost? Who is paying? Where's the budget? Or do we just remove a lane on Marine Drive to avoid the tens of millions of dollars in cost? And what does that do to the existing gridlock? Modi has warned us in the past of road network failure with Emery on Mountain Highway and the Innovation District on Dollerton. Further, how do we pay, how do we afford to pay for land to increase green space, community facility expansion? When our only real solution is to borrow, do we need leave mountains of debts for the future? Burnaby draws funds from gaming and they and they are challenged, challenged. How do we think this is going to work for us? Where is the infrastructure, the memorandums of understanding from senior levels of government help pay for the infrastructure needed to support this density? And the and further 50,000 units that our neighbors need to absorb. We all use the same roads, bridges and facilities. Do we have a plan? I've never seen one. We are simply under pressure to pass a blank check and figure out later how we are going to find the ways to prevent the check from bouncing. When the doors of immigration were opened, where were the feds with money to support the increase in population? Now we are expanding national security and we think there will be money for municipalities? The legislation has been a political move by a province, by the province lobbied by the Urban Development Institute with Freedom of Information Documentation to back it up. The conflict of interest is stunning and we are going to be the ones blamed for a plan that has been forced on us with no time or understanding of the implications and zero funding in place. The taxpayers are already revolting, I'll take my other two minutes because of the sewage treatment plant. Do you believe the infrastructure costs are going to lessen when we triple our density? Lions Gate is not built for growth, the sewage treatment plant. How much more will it cost to add the necessary capacity to accommodate this unplanned provincial unit count of over 60,000 additional units? Metro was never consulted on the infrastructure impacts of the legislation. District Engineering and Finance has had no time to build a plan as this amendment needs to be passed before December 25. This irresponsible legislation has been passed with no debate for the sake of politics and power. And it will only cost and exacerbate the challenges we face now. Our tax increase this year started at 9%. When will double digits be reality? Development does not pay for development, this document and the approval of it has far reaching consequences that will be, we will be responsible for. Because if we don't do it, the province is threatened that they will do it for us. Is this democracy? We are at a watershed moment in our history and we are debating these far reaching impacts in a single meeting in front of the public. Last year, we passed a resolution to allow every single family lot to allow a coach house just under 16,000 units. But in addition to the thousands of potential secondary suites, does this not surpass the housing target need? Why are we wanting to go beyond? It's not our job to predict the future of the market highlighted in this report, it's to communicate and find balance. The public has no idea what is happening. Three 27 story towers in Lowerland accommodate 1,300 units. Do the math on how many will be needed in Lynn Valley Mall and the surrounding area to absorb 6,000, 30, 40, 50 stories, no information in the report. When will that be discussed? When it's too late? How will lower cat Marine Drive, Lowerland, Maplewood absorb an additional 12,000 units? Have we told the taxpayer how much their taxes will go up with no consultation with the voters? You are making a decision without 80% of the information on the table dictated to you by a government with a slim majority. Our chief engineer and our CFO will tell you this kind of density takes years to plan for infrastructure costs. The province has given us one. Are we willing to pass this because the provinces says so? Are we going to stand up and push back on behalf of our community and democracy to understand the implications before we sign that blank check?
Councillor Murray, next speaker is councillor Beck.
Thank you, Mayor Little, I'm just going to take a second, that was. Interesting comment. Anyway, I I just want to start by thanking staff and and let you know that you're supported. I recognize how much work has gone into getting us to this point. And the deep public engagement that you've had to do over the last number of months. And just want to recognize that I appreciate this is an immense amount of work in a short period of time. It's also a big step tonight in shaping how our community grows over the next two decades. And maybe I can present a little bit more of a positive vision than my colleagues. Because I'm in support of the recommendation here tonight, as stated in the staff report. Housing needs exist, whether we choose to acknowledge them or not. There is a projected need for over 22,000 new homes in the District of North Vancouver over the next 20 years. That demand isn't theoretical, it's reflected back to us every day in the form of young adults living at home longer. Essential workers commuting from outside our community every day. And families struggling to find appropriate and affordable housing so they can live in our community. This region is growing, it's one of the most desirable places to live. And the District of North Vancouver will absorb some of that growth, no matter how much we might wish otherwise. The question for us as leaders in this community and around this table is not if we grow, but how we grow. Ignoring this reality won't make the need disappear. In fact, inaction will only make things worse, pushing prices even higher, reducing diversity in our neighborhoods. And leaving us vulnerable to unplanned reactive development, something that we do see today. Largely, I would say as a result of resistance to change in this community and from around this council table. This update is about taking responsibility. It's about planning for growth in a thoughtful, deliberate way. It allows us to concentrate the majority of our growth, 75% of our growth in areas that can support it. Where transit services and amenities already exist or can be expanded. Protecting the character of existing neighborhoods while allowing new neighborhoods to flourish. And just as important, this is about financial sustainability. Because much of our infrastructure, our pipes, our sewers, our roads. Were built for a sprawling car dependent suburb. And that low density pattern is expensive to maintain and even more expensive to replace. Denser development, despite what you may be hearing, means lower infrastructure cost per person and allows us to deliver services more efficiently. When we focus growth strategically, we get better value from our infrastructure investments. That's critical as we face growing capital needs across the district and we know how true those challenges are with every capital project today. Recent projects like our new Maplewood Fire and Rescue Center, the Lynn Creek Community Center are just examples of how targeted investments can support complete resilient and connected communities. Specific to this revised scenario, I'm also encouraged by the inclusion of more options for multiplex housing. These types of homes duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. They offer a form of missile missing middle housing as one speaker tonight highlighted in his comments. And more choices for families, for seniors looking to downsize and stay in their own neighborhoods. And for younger residents trying to stay in the community that they grew up in. Right now, we don't see many duplexes being built in a D N B. We've been too restrictive. This update can help change that by making this sort of housing more viable from both a zoning and a market perspective. I also want to be clear in my comments tonight and I will, I'll take the additional two minutes that I can. I also want to be clear that my support for this refined scenario doesn't mean I fully support the province's approach. I remain concerned about some aspects of the province's broader approach, assigning housing targets to local governments. Without those corresponding plans or funding for infrastructure needs. Does place a considerable burden on us as a municipality and as councillors, we must continue to advocate for support on this. But we still have a responsibility to respond constructively, not in a way that's going to do the bare minimum and result in 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 really no increase in housing. This plan puts us in a stronger position to shape the growth in a way that works for our residents. And to continue holding other levels of government accountable for the support that we'll need to make it all work. It's not about growth for growth's sake, it's about planning for the people who already live here. It's about planning for the people who already live here and for the ones who are coming, and we want to welcome to our community because we need them. It's about making room for our kids to stay in the community that they grew up in, for seniors who want to age in place near the parks, their friends and services that they know, for the nurse that's working the night shift at Lions Gate, the teacher commuting from Squamish, the server, the tradesperson, the newcomer family, the people who help this place function and thrive. And if we get this right, we're not just meeting a housing target. That's not what this is about. We're shaping neighborhoods where people of all ages and incomes can belong, where the growth we allow today supports the infrastructure, the transit and the public spaces that we'll need tomorrow, and where community character is not erased, but evolves to reflect our shared values. So I believe this refined scenario gives us a path forward that's intentional, it's balanced, and it's grounded in both the needs of our residents and the realities of a changing region. It's also proper planning, not what's being suggested here tonight as an alternate option. It will take continued advocacy to other levels of government, for sure, and progress will require strong collaboration between departments across councils and in partnership with our residents. But I believe that we can rise to that challenge when we work together. Thank you.
councillor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Thank you to staff, obviously, for all your painstaking work, and thank you to the government of council. Just to summarize, we're here because provincial government has mandated that we determine housing needs according to their methodology, and when we adopt their methodology, we have to build 22,369 new homes over 20 years, which, to put it in context, is approximately double our current rate of growth. Now, first of all, I just find this whole exercise detached from reality. The first reason it's detached from reality is because zoning isn't going to create housing. We can zone all we like, but we're not going to get housing. When this issue came to the fore, the provincial government, I'm just taking a few statistics on housing starts. In February of 2023, there were just over 4,000 housing starts. February 2024, there were 3,600 housing starts. February 2025, most recent date for which we have data that I saw easily, our housing starts have dipped to 2,200. So there we go. We have a plan designed to increase housing supply, and instead, we have a decrease in housing supply. Housing starts going down, not going up. But beyond that, so maybe that gives us some comfort, because we're not necessarily going to get 22,000 new housing units, and we better not get 22,000 new housing units, because this plan doesn't have any realistic expectations around infrastructure. How are we going to accommodate 22,000 new housing units along with 10,000 new housing units in the District of West Vancouver, another 21 new housing units in the city of West Vancouver, thousands more from the First Nations, without significant transportation investment, including rapid transit to the North Shore? Greatly expanded schools and hospitals, eventually an overarching infrastructure plan to support these population increases. These provisions for housing expansion are, at this stage, imaginary. Our basic infrastructure is already overtaxed, and I'm not aware of any specific plans, and I study this as closely as I can. I'm not aware of any specific plans that are required to match 20 years of rising populations with 20 years of upgraded infrastructure, nor any realistic plans to pay for this. So this is where we find ourselves. Instead of being guided by the province towards real plans to create affordable housing and real plans to create infrastructure to support our populations, that's what the public wants us to be talking about. How are we going to create affordable housing? How are we going to create infrastructure? How are we going to support the population that we already have, let alone the population that's coming? Instead of that, we're being required to create specific plans for over 22,000 housing units over the next 20 years. So that's what our staff has had to do. They're required to do it by law. At some point, and I say this with a with a voice of hope, at some point, a provincial government is going to have to stop putting the cart before the horse, because you see, the cart should go, the horse should go in front of that cart, so that it pulls the cart. Simple. And in the same way, infrastructure goes in front of housing, so that it supports our way of life and the way of life of those that we're importing into our community. Until then, and like the others, I'll take my next two minutes, until then, all of this is really an academic exercise. So if we are going to engage in this flight of fancy, where are we going to put 22,000 new housing units to go along with however many? My math skills aren't that good, so I can't count up all the others, but how are we going to support all of this? I do think if if we're forced to create zoning for housing, I compliment staff. I think the revised scenario in the recommendation is realistic, given the options available. Clearly, the community, if it must, would prefer growth not being concentrated in tall structures and town centers and does perform more gentle densification, distributed across existing neighborhoods if they're forced to, that would be the plan. The plan seeks to both expand some of our town centers, as discussed, and allow multiplexes along some of our transit corridors, along with other modest increase in density in some other areas. We'll need to be careful, as we even contemplate this plan, that we protect existing affordable rental stock, because our history has been to create affordable housing, we demolish the only affordable housing we have, put up housing people can't afford, and then watch the traffic get worse and worse and worse, and call that planning. One concluding comment in the few seconds I have left. Overall, much of the district is not ideal for significant increases in population due to topography, steep slopes and watercourses, transportation constraints. We're already deeply gridlocked, fire risk, flood risk, and challenges with basic services. Overall, viewing our region in totality, there are other places across the region which would better support growth, but that will be a debate that we'll need to leave to another day when we have a different and more receptive provincial government.
Thank you very much, councillor Hanson. councillor Pope.
Thank you very much. I support, strongly support, this refined scenario for increasing density in the district. We have a housing crisis, whether you want to say so or not. We have a housing crisis. We need more housing, all types of housing, and especially affordable housing. And this council has done a terrible job of providing homes for this community, previous councils. According to the annual report that we just received, the district has the second lowest growth rate of all metro municipalities. There is almost nowhere and no options for young people to live or start families and countless other people, including seniors who have had to move off the North Shore because of it, not to mention our growing homeless problem. Why? Because some members of this council consistently voted against building homes for people who need them, anti-development. For example, we have a perfect example just down the street. The new Hollybrook Affordable Housing in Delbrook could have been built years ago. And situations like that is the reason why the province targeted the district as an underperformer in housing. There are very few options for middle-income and professional people to live, including caregivers and frontline police officers. For example, I recently learned we're about to lose another RCMP officer, because he can't afford to live here with his family. And the Mounties are already short-staffed, and our community is paying the price for that. To quote from this report, "Business as usual will not accommodate the district's housing needs, and in particular, it will not provide for affordable and/or rental housing." I note that a strong common theme from the engagement process was a desire for more diverse housing options and increased affordability and support for refined scenario three, the original one that's been refined, to distribute growth, which I support. When it comes to specific areas, I favor increased development along the Marine Corridor east of Lions Gate Village. That area is on a possible future bus rapid transit line, which will reduce congestion. We can build more vibrancy and affordable housing in that section, and, as highlighted in the report, it has the most capacity for growth anywhere. If you could put up the slide now. I also favor development in another area that's not on this list and which could potentially take off some pressure off Lynn Valley and other town centers, where many people have said they don't want high rises and increased development. And that is the area that is south of Marine Drive, surrounding Pemberton Street. Thank you. Which is mostly light industrial. I envision a whole new vibrant community that could be created and filled with breweries and restaurants, car repair shops, appliance and furniture stores, and residential and affordable housing. I envision transforming that neighborhood so that it retains its light industrial character and also includes a mix of residential, I'll take the second two, and zoning required, requiring a percentage of all residential be truly affordable housing. Think Granville Island. Visionary, 50 years ago, they built it. It's the most amazing neighborhood, and it's built around industrial, and it's filled with co-ops and affordable housing and including high-end market stratus as well. So overall, I support the refined OCP density with expanded boundaries in some town centers and growth spread outside of town centers. And that strongly aligns with what we heard from the public during an extensive engagement process. I also favor multiplexes being introduced into some neighborhoods, although I'm not sure about the ones that have been identified, I would also like to see those spread throughout the district. And if we move forward with this, I want to see better protections in place for tenants in older apartments that are targeted for developments. The changes to the tenant protections must be done in tandem with the OCP update and not as some afterthought after this is all done. So can staff advise exactly what date on the calendar those changes to tenant protection are scheduled for?
Mr Milver. Thank you, your worship. The intent is for consequential amendment bylaws such as a tenant relocation assistance bylaw would be to bring that concurrently with any amendment to the zoning bylaw, so it wouldn't be an afterthought, it would be an occurrence happening concurrently. So the intent is to move the existing policy council has, which applies to rezonings only, into a bylaw that would then apply to all developments, allow it under the provincial statutes that have been changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Meanwhile, I agree with councillor Pack that with his comments, as well as that we need to keep the pressure on provincial and federal governments and BC Transit for improved transportation corridors to ease congestion. And I guess I'm out of time.
Yeah, just going to do my second time speaking, if I may. So if I can have you go back to the slide again with the orange bars. While we're getting there, so that the challenge that's been represented here a couple of times, that that this is a no-growth scenario, that there's no growth in the OCP, I want to put that to rest. All of that orange is thousands and thousands and thousands of units that are already in the OCP as potential capacity. We can build that. We already have that growth. What we're talking about today is going far above that orange growth area, and that's why we're highlighting this. This isn't a no-growth versus, you know, modest, reasonable growth. This is planned growth that we had in the OCP versus going way above the provincial targets for our community targets that are nowhere near being being real projections. The challenge is, you have some very good arguments here, that we all know teachers and nurses and caregivers that have had trouble finding housing. The problem is, our market economist has told us that in order to produce affordable units in this community, you have to produce nine units of market for every one unit of non-market. And so you have to make the problem a whole lot worse to get those non-market units into the mix, and you probably have to target the most affordable housing in the community. As we experienced in Emery, in Lynn Valley, you went from a three-bedroom place being $2,600 a month to the three-bedroom place in the new building being over $6,000 a month. The new units being produced are not affordable. They're coming in at 1,200 to 1,600 bucks per square foot for sale. A thousand-square-foot unit, $1.6 million. Wrong. And so, sorry, please don't interrupt me. It's my
There were no tenant protections.
Please don't interrupt me. It's my turn to speak. I was respectful of your time. Then also, the other challenge is that the rental that's coming in is coming in at $4 to $4.50 per square foot. For a thousand-square-foot unit, $4,500 a month. That's what we're talking about here, is producing nine of those units for that one unit you may be able to get to a caregiver or a person who the appeal was made to.
Only if there's no other partners.
Fair representation.
Just not true. It's just not true at all.
You've gone full-time. I've gone full-time. It's now on to councillor Hanson, you're up. Was that a second time speaking? I think you've already covered yours. councillor Ma.
Boy, a pretty lively debate. This OCP update would probably be a key, if not the main decision that we make as on this council. I see the need to plan for growth, because history has shown we can't turn on a dime. As councillor Pope said, it took over 10 years for Hollybrook to be built. Change is tough for some people, for some residents. It mixes, it changes what we love about this place. And that's, that's the struggle I have. When I see the scale of the development that the provincial governments, I was going to say asking, but it's mandating us to do, that's significant. That's 22,369. I'm told that's like a 67% increase, as councillor Hanson mentioned, is probably twice as much as we've done. I did the numbers, too. That will have a significant impact on the community that we love. If we don't plan to, the infrastructure, the schools, the hospitals, the parks, it's incredible to try to get around this community even now. It just seems so rushed. One of the other councillors mentioned that the previous OCP cycle was about four years, which is maybe a little long, but, you know, there's a lot of input. But now, we're being rushed to do it in less than a year. I also think we need to signal to the development community that we, as a district, do welcome affordable and appropriate projects. We have to remember that council or municipality doesn't build. It is the development community. There was a comment earlier about some developments down along Pemberton. I would caution against that. We want housing, but we also don't want to sacrifice our light industrial land. When you speak with businesses, they're having a tough time finding places. A simple thing is even parking their trucks, you know, their work trucks. The, if they don't have the lot, they're parking on the streets, and that changes and puts other pressures in communities. Like, everything is this being piled on top. We need to take a thoughtful and slower approach. Ultimately, I want this council and the community to move forward, but we need to do it in a thoughtful and deliberate way. I want to thank I want to thank Jason and the rest of the team. When I read this, I go, holy smokes, there's a lot of competing demands. Everyone has interests, I get that, but at the same time, as Counselor Back mentioned, we have a responsibility to plan. Sorry, can we bring that motion back up? On the first part, Jason, I actually was not gonna support refined scenario, I was leaning more to the original scenario three, but that seems like a moot point right now. But this shouldn't be looked at as this like a numbers game. We are trying to do what's right for the community. I don't know if there's another option in between. One says go ahead, other one says kind of like do as least as possible. Well, is there any other option? Well, developing along Pemberton, I'm sorry, that's, that's not something that I think is the right decision. It's maybe a rhetorical question, but we might have to slow down a bit, but not stop. We are, we are, as the mayor said, we are moving ahead with projects. It's not like we're not doing anything. Sorry, Dan, I don't know the numbers, how many's in stream right now, roughly?
Not sure if the staff have the numbers off the top of their head. I think we've had about eight thousand units approved since 2011 by council, and I think we have about two-and-a-half thousand units in stream, two-and-a-half to three thousand units.
And our average in the last five years was five hundred a year?
In terms of council approvals, if you average it, the council approvals fluctuate year to year, but if you average it between five and six hundred units per year is on an average of fourteen years.
So we are building. I just don't know if we want to build twenty-two thousand by fifteen years, if that's the right thing for the district. So, I'm not gonna take my two minutes, oh, I guess you started that already, but I might come back, thank you.
All right, well. Counselor Forbes.
Thank you, worship. Our OCP is a living document of how, what, where, when, and why the district will develop its lands. There have been many amendments to the OCP since its inception in 2011. And these amendments were brought to council for a vote after input from the community, interested parties, and public hearing, at public hearings. The provincial government has passed several bills now with varying timelines and mandating the what, when, where, and how is to be implemented. These bills will impact our entire community for years to come without solving the transportation infrastructure, which includes a hospital and more schools, and the affordability problem that we have been experiencing for many years, and no funding forthcoming from senior governments for these issues. How is it a responsible, fiscally prudent decision to add twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-nine new housing units? And who will pay for all the needed additional services this will bring? The North Shore taxpayers are already impacted for the next thirty years for the massive cost of the North Shore wastewater treatment plant, and we still don't have the final bill on that. This report leaves many important questions unanswered. Who were the interested parties and organizations and committee members that were consulted? Council received approval for three housing units, principal, principal suite and coach house, all on a single-family lot in the district recently. This translates into sixteen thousand new coach houses and ten thousand new secondary suites. Why doesn't this twenty-six thousand count towards our quota? It's the staff's job to give us all the information and council's job to make the decision that is in the best interest of the community and protect our taxpayers, not to enable the provincial government mandate. Do we have any MOUs or agreements with TransLink and/or the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure for how transit will be paid for to accommodate this increase in density? Has TransLink confirmed a long-term operations budget for increased services? Who will pay to acquire the right-of-ways for the BRT from Park Royal to FIBs? Has the province committed to any funding to accommodate the increase in the infrastructure needed for over seventy thousand units across the North Shore? How many units are envisioned on First Nations land? Where will infrastructure money come from to support that density? Has there been a sustainable funding plan done and shared with the community on how infrastructure and services will be paid for based on future increase to density? This year's current tax rate started at nine percent. It was lowered to five-point-four percent by efficiencies, phasing of projects, drawing down reserves, reserves, et cetera. How much additional tax monies will be needed for these additional services? Have we figured out a way to pay for our already existing capital funding gap? Increased housing density will require increased parks and open spaces. Has this been accounted for in the examples in this report? Both our senior governments are looking for more revenue for the budgets, for their budgets, and one source could be getting increased property tax revenue from mandating more and more and more residential units. Our OCP was well thought out over two years with many opportunities for everyone to have input. The community and council have had seven days to review the refined scenario. The decisions made on this updated OCP will be community-altering for years. Please think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've had, I don't see any further speakers at this time. I just want to be clear about what we have on the floor. It means that this debate continues on with these two options. It doesn't mean that council can't come up with a third option at some point in the future. Or as this process unfolds even this year. It just means that instead of going to the fall with just one option before us, we will have two options that we can discuss at the time. And if council so wishes, they can change it if they, if they'd like. But the intent wasn't just to put forward the second clause, my motion was to include both clauses, so that debate continues. So, is that clear what we're voting on at this time? I've had a request to bifurcate, and so my challenge with the bifurcation, okay, would be that it, it doesn't actually make sense anymore, and frankly, it means that we can't have the broader debate going into the fall. Counselor Ma, on the process?
Yes, sort of. I just want to be clear, if we vote for this, are we not creating twice as much work for our already tapped-out staff?
Theoretically, the second one is almost already a match with the OCP that's in place. Yeah, it's gonna create more work, but it's, it's so we can have the debate.
I think there are a number of challenges from staff's perspective. One would be the, that there are two actual bylaws at play that need to be considered by council between now and the end of the year. One is the official community plan bylaw, and the understand the direction is to have two options before council. One, the revised scenario, and two, minimally changing scenario, if you will. That's more straightforward. What is, I think, more challenging that I know is tumbling around in staff's mind right now is how would we recommend changes to each of the properties within those areas in terms of zoning? There's quite a significant amount of analysis that would go on, on either one of those scenarios in order to demonstrate how we would be able to provide the necessary zoned lands to accommodate growth, which is the term used in the act. And so certainly there would be some additional time needed for staff, which may push this conversation a little farther into the fall than we earlier anticipated.
Sorry, just, this is a follow-up comment. You know, deadline is December thirty-first. We, if we don't hit it, but are working towards it, I'm not sure if that's gonna, you know, bring the sky down on us, or?
Mr. Milburn? We would prefer to give that advice after consulting with legal counsel, thank you.
Motion that are available on the, on the No. I'm not. I, it'll be a vote on this as a whole, and if this doesn't pass, then something else can come forward in its place. But at this point, this is a vote on this as a, as a whole. I heard that from Counselor Murray, and but just thinking about it now, it's not, it's not really the point of it to say, like, if, if, if you want to vote for, I, I can bifurcate it, it's not that big of a deal, it would just have to be acknowledged that if there's a chance that today only one of those two options would be passed rather than continuing the debate. So to be clear, there's a chance that the minimally compliant one would be decided on as being the choice today rather than continuing the debate with two into the fall. Just want to make you aware of that. So would anybody like me to bifurcate the motion?
Is there another relevant discussions on that now?
Uh, no. This is just about whether you want it separated or not. Would anybody like to separate the two motions?
Thanks. I need help with this.
It, it means that we get to debate both motions in the fall.
So on the first option, to implement the refined scenario as provided in attachment three law, so that's as-is to agree to implement it. That's, that's A. And then B is almost a contradiction of that, and that council directs staff to develop the necessary OCP and zoning bylaw amendments to be minimally compliant. So it, one completely contradicts the other, really.
Ultimately, you'll have to pick one, but both options will be prepared for you. Is that clear?
It's, it's, if I may ask a question, it is clear to me now that there's a chance that you separate the two, the first one would fail, and I do want both to come back so that we can have it, can have this debate one more time. Okay, I mean, yeah.
Basically is to live to fight another day. That's, it is. Like, I'm not
So this option means the debate carries on about it, council can present
Leave it in there.
Council can present alternatives and, and that's what's on the floor. It's been seconded, it's been moved and seconded. I'm prepared to call the question on it. Okay, all those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, council. Thank you, staff, for your presentation, that's a complex matter, we do appreciate the work you put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship, members of council.
Item is item eight-point-four. This is the zoning bylaw rewrite, proposed single-family zoning changes. And as Mr. Zhang gets ready, Mr. Milburn, do you have some opening comments?
Yes, very, very briefly, your worship. This particular zoning bylaw amendment is being coincidentally timed because we're looking at reviewing, of course, the whole zoning bylaw relative to the Bill forty-four requirements. But this is also a matter that council has been raising for years and been interested in looking at how to improve single-family zones in various ways. So this is really the culmination of that feedback we've received over some time. And the one thing I will note that is different from the previous conversation about the OCP, and this is only about a conversation about single-family, is this does not have the time limitation where council needs to make a decision before December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. This is simply an opportunity, it's a coincidental opportunity, we're being opportunistic, bringing this forward to council, and I think we're bringing forward ideas that reflect a conversation in the community and with council to really improve simplification of delivering this regulatory environment for a single family. And Mr. Zhang is our in-house expert, and we look forward to his presentation. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Mr. Milburn, welcome, Mr. Zhang.
Go for it. Hello? Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council, members of the public. My name is Kevin Zhang, Senior Planner with the District, and tonight, I'm here to present a suite of proposed changes to our single-family zoning regulations, which is the first piece to be tackled as part of the overall zoning bylaw rewrite. This presentation is about fifteen minutes long, and it outlines our guiding principles for drafting these changes, what the changes are, and the public feedback on those changes. So before we dive into the changes, I always find it helpful to set the context so that we're all at the same starting point. The main point I want to establish here is that the impact of these changes are both large and small at the same time. And by large, I mean that these changes are very wide-reaching, affecting all single-family lots within the urban container containment boundary. And on the map here, that means all the yellow areas that you see and within the purple line, which is the urban containment boundary. And that's approximately twenty thousand properties, and without a doubt, the largest land use in the district by area. By small, I mean these changes do not require any changes to existing homes. And I repeat, that if you're someone living in your home, and you want to continue using it exactly as is, you know, you can go back to enjoying your evening. What the changes do affect is looking, is for those who are looking to build a new house, a new coach house, or undertake major renovations or additions. And based on recent data, there are around a hundred of those each year, which is about half a percent of all the lots. Now, a bit of background, single-family development has always been a topic of interest both for council and the public. And the following are some recent touchpoints with council leading up today. In twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, council saw strategies for mitigating impacts of single-family renewal, which led to updated Good Neighbor Program, information awareness and regulation review. Twenty-seventeen to eighteen, council identified single-family key work priorities, which involved enforcement, erosion settlement control, green space, and landscaping. Oh, sorry, thank you very much. And to the most important point, which is highlighted in yellow here, in twenty-twenty-four, last year, council adopted zoning changes that permit house, suite, and coach house on all lots within the urban containment boundary. And there was recognition at the time that changes need to be made to our outdated zones to facilitate such developments. And in the beginning of this year, that work started with streamlining of some coach house processes. However, other improvements were still in the works, and that which is why we're here tonight. Our work has been guided by five key principles developed through public engagement and industry feedback, and these are improving deliverability of living spaces and our responses to climate change, streamlining regulations to provide more flexibility, which is also aligned with our DAPR process, and that stands for Development Application Process Review. We recognize that our single-family zones have been in place for decades, so there is a need to balance change with the neighborhood character that we all value. We want to enable more cost-effective and sustainable construction methods. And most importantly, we're looking to maintain the overall buildable area currently permitted on properties. Now, most of these are pretty self-explanatory, maybe we're the exception of the last one, but it's a very important one, so I'll dedicate a slide to that. Maintaining buildable area. The heart of this issue is development rates. Development rates on a single-family lot can be best approximated by the total, total buildable area. And to illustrate this, I've chosen our most typical scenario in the district, which is a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot that's zone RS-three. The current bylaw limits the house to be about twenty-six-hundred square feet or zero-point-three-five FSR, which is highlighted in the blue circle. So those are the blue areas. However, there are many floor space exemptions in the current regulations. And floor space exemptions, for those who are not familiar, just means that you can build it, but it doesn't count towards your total floor area for zoning compliance purposes. And some of those are highlighted in gray, so we have floor space exemptions for garages, basements, accessory buildings, et cetera. And once you add it all up, the total buildable area on this hypothetical lot is fifty-three-hundred square foot or point-seven FSR. And this is a number that you're probably more familiar with, this is the number that you see in real estate listings. Now, we're not here to debate the size of houses tonight, because this number is currently what's permitted under existing zoning bylaw regulations. What I want to, what I want to emphasize is that a guiding principle of our zoning update is that existing development rights, AKA buildable area of single-family lots are generally maintained, meaning the total livable space is approximately the same Meaning the total livable space is approximately the same as the existing regulations. Otherwise, no down zoning is intended. Now, based on these principles, staff have are proposing. A set of five key changes, and we'll touch upon these in greater detail in the presentation. But these in general are remove floor space exemptions for basements and cellars, increase maximum house height, permit more buildable. Area in the front setback, increasing minimum coach house, sorry, maximum coach house size, and consolidating most single family zones. And before we delve into the changes in detail, I want to highlight that based on public engagement conducted in April, there was general support. For the changes you're about to see tonight. And the engagement was conducted in conjunction with the O C P update, as previously mentioned, and included open house. In-person open houses, online webinars, surveys, mailouts, newspaper ads, and signage throughout the district. And resulted in just over ninety nine hundred, five hundred, nine hundred and fifty completed surveys. And the results show that there was general support for lifting basements out of the ground, for taller buildings, while noting the potential impacts. For more flexible living spaces. For larger coach houses, for more building in the front yard, and the only thing that was kind of mixed review on was parking reductions. Now, recurring to our key five key changes, the first proposal. Addresses the current incentive to build deep basements. Which does have general public support. Right now, fully in-ground basements and cellars are exempt from floor space calculations, which encourages their construction, even when it's not necessary for topographic reasons. The proposal is to count all floor area is to remove this exemption, count all floor area, including basements. But offset that with an increase in F S R so that the total floor area, buildable floor area is maintained. Thereby removing the incentive to build deep below ground. The diagram here shows the difference between a full basement on the left. And a partial basement on the right, and staff recognize that partial basements are still necessary, simply due to our sloping nature of the district. Now, why discourage deep basements and sellers, one might ask, you know, that's, you know, it's great for storage, mechanical rooms. And, you know, it's great temperature for perhaps a wine cellar or something like that. Now, remember my first slide. Where I talked about that these bylaw changes mostly affect new builds. And in new builds, secondary suites are almost always in the basement. So the conversation is totally different when the basement is not a nice to have secondary space, but a family's complete indoor existence. So basements are problematic on many fronts, but from a livability standpoint, they often rely on small window wells with grates such as this. For their source of light and air. Accessibility is typically very hard to achieve due to grade differences. And they're always the first to flood, no matter if the water originated from the inside or the outside. On a more macro level, deep basements often lead to large excavations, and we're all familiar with scenes such as this in our neighborhoods. Where there is a massive excavation from property line to property line, there's huge soil disturbance, and it's very hard to retain trees when roots are affected. Potential issues with lateral support of neighbors' houses, and you're lucky if it doesn't turn into a giant pond. Basements also require more concrete than slab on grade foundations, and this is leads to more expensive construction and more embodied carbon. Deep basements also take away from the ground's ability to absorb stormwater and block flows for groundwater. And this, I think, will be touched on in Peter's presentation later on in the in the council agenda. And lastly, even after constructed, basements permanently rely on mechanical systems like sump or sanitary pumps. To manage water. Given all of these factors, staff are proposing to draft new zoning regulations such that deep basements and sellers are disincentivized. By removing the basement exemptions, but then again, also offsetting that by increasing the F S R to maintain total buildable area. Now, if we lift this space from the basement, where does it go? This leads us to our second proposed change, which is allowing partial third story. And the rationale is that relocating space up, we're able to limit the expansion of building footprints. The smaller the building footprint, the more space can be reserved for green spaces, trees, and leisure activities. And this idea received approximately sixty percent support based on public feedback. So what is a partial third story? Well, I'm happy to explain that. I know you guys are probably thinking about that. So on the left. Is a simplified diagram of our existing regulations where a full basement is encouraged because we say, you know, if you build it deep, we're not going to count it. This is why almost all new builds have fully buried secondary suites. Now, this is not all bad. Because there are. This does lead to a smaller above ground massing, shorter buildings, and potentially less privacy and shadow concerns. On the right is what staff are recommending based on everything mentioned earlier and public feedback. The entire building is permitted to be above ground, so there's no change in the total overall volume of the building. It's just that it's placed slightly at a different elevation. The partial third story means that the third floor can be a maximum, or at least we're proposing, a maximum of seventy five percent of the area of the second floor. And the benefits, you know, I won't go through it again, but we just talked about in the previous slide involving livability, groundwater flows, etc. The middle diagram recognizes that partial basements will still be needed due to sloping lots. And we're proposing a slight increase in the total height so that the basements can be lifted as much out of the ground as practical. Usually meaning at least four foot exposed so that windows are not looking onto the ground. They're looking onto the sky. So there's no right or wrong answer here, but as you can see, there are merits to both, and I'm going to dub that the basement trade off. So staff are recommending that we permit both options on the right. Because the list of because of the list of social and environmental benefits and let homeowners. Give them the ability to choose what begs worse for their family and their specific lot. And of course, we are very interested in hearing council's opinions on this spectrum. Now, I'll just quickly add that the third story is not new. These are all existing houses in the district right now. Three-story expressions already exist are in many neighborhoods due to slope topography. By proposing a partial rather than a full third story, we're taking a measured and incremental approach. This will allow staff to monitor the results and ensure that the changes are compatible with our neighborhoods over time. The third change proposes to allow two-story living space in a portion of the front yard where the garages are currently permitted. So here you see a picture of a house with a garage in a portion of the front yard. Again, this strives to answer the same question. If we lift space out of the ground, where does it go? Now, these two diagrams illustrate this concept in more detail. So on the left, you can see a building with a portion. Of the building, which is in the front yard. So you can't build within your front yard. However, current regulations limit that to one story, and it must be for a side entry garage, very specific. On the right, we're proposing to allow the same on the same footprint. Except two stories rather than one, and also give people the choice to use it for living or parking, not restricted to just parking. And the rationale here is similar to the first change. If we permit more space on top of what's already a building. That leaves more space in the rear yard for green space, trees, and recreation. In addition, there's generally less privacy and overlooked concerns with buildings in the front yard. This change would give homeowners and designers more options to locating their living spaces, help preserve more usable private open space in the rear yard. And it has roughly seventy three percent support from our responses. The fourth change is about housing diversity and multi generational living, as we've heard from other speakers here tonight. Staff proposes to increase. The maximum allowable size of a coach house to fourteen hundred square feet, large enough for a three bedroom home. With a limit of two stories, that's unchanged. And this change also saw strong support from the public with about seventy three percent. And the intent really is to create more livable, family oriented housing options, support multi generational living. And to give homeowners more choice on how to permit their floor space. And by that last bullet, I mean that if someone wanted to build a larger coach house in exchange for a smaller main house, they're free to make that choice. I will note that increasing the maximum permitted house, coach house size to fourteen hundred square feet doesn't mean every lot will be able to build a fourteen hundred square foot coach house. The ability to build depends on factors such as how much remaining floor space. You have on a lot, the available space after meeting all your setback requirements, whether a lot, whether or not a lot has adequate servicing or water pressure for fire safety, etc. Finally, our fifth proposed change is more technical in nature, and that is to consolidate most of our single family zones. The district currently has over twenty different single family zones, many created decades ago with only slight differences between them. This complexity is a source of confusion and inefficiency for builders and homeowners. The following is a chart. Showing how many lots we have in each of our single family zones, and you don't have to read any of the numbers. The key takeaway is that we have a lot of zones. Yet, the vast majority of our single family zones, or sixty five percent of them, fall into just two zones, which is the RS three and RS four lots. So the diversity is a little deceiving. Consolidating these zones will make the regulations far easier to understand, apply, and administer, leading to faster permitting process times. Almost all feedback received from the public strongly supported this change, and in fact, many people were not even aware we had so many single family zones, and many people questioned whether that's even necessary. Now, know that the consolidation only applies to properties within the urban containment boundary. And properties outside the urban containment boundary will be still be separate as coach houses are not currently permitted outside the urban containment boundary. As part of this process, staff also reviewed parking requirements. Now, public feedback on the parking issue was evenly divided. Many supported lowering the parking requirement due to site constraints, associated construction costs, and wanting to promote alternative modes of transport. However, many others opposed reduction to parking requirements by citing existing street parking constraints in neighborhoods. Transit limitations in some areas, and various reasons why many residents will continue to rely on vehicles. So therefore, staff are recommending this time to maintain the status quo, which is two stalls for a single family house. Or three stalls for a home with a secondary suite, a home with a coach house, or a home with both. This doesn't preclude us from granting variances in specific cases. And certainly, staff are applying to revisit this topic as travel patterns evolve and we get more data. Lastly, there are a number of other proposed changes that are consequential to the key changes. Be aimed at clarifying and simplifying the regulations, and three, improving livability, building efficiency, and environmental stewardship. Looking at our project timeline for the entire zoning bylaw, there are four main work streams. Stream one is on your screen here, and it's all about single family, and we're here for a key check in with council. Should council provide direction to proceed, staff will spend the summer refining these proposals and returning in the fall with new single family zones. Both for within the government containment boundary and outside. Stream two is the new multiplex, multifamily, and mixed use zones, and they're already under development, and they are intended to support the O C P update. And will also be presented to council later this year. Stream three is rewrite of all the other non-housing related zones, such as commercial, industrial, parks. Which will take place later this year and into twenty twenty six. Now, lastly, stream four is a new digital interface for the new zoning bylaw, which is aimed at enhancing accessibility and functionality, and that will happen towards winter twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. So in conclusion, the suite of changes presented tonight represent a significant and balanced step towards our. Single family zones. These changes are designed to be more flexible, streamlined, and responsive regulatory framework that supports the district goals for housing diversity. Environmental sustainability, and enhanced livability in our neighborhood and neighborhood compatibility. It expected that these changes will result in incremental change over time, reflecting in a slow and steady pace of single family home renewal. Lastly, I will leave on the screen a brief summary of our five key proposed changes, which we are looking for council input on. And that concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions from staff. From council, I mean. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zhang. So. A lot of these issues that you've identified are things that we've been talking about for a long time, and council's pretty familiar with. But there's still a lot of specifics and questions that I have, and I'm sitting looking at the breadth of this, and my questions are all over the map. And I'm thinking that this may be better suited in a workshop. So my motion will be that this item be referred to a workshop. Is there a second on that? Second, I've got second from Council Ma on that. So. I. I've been very supportive of getting rid of the basement exemption, adding some more massing to the house, but we need some specifics. How much height is it going to change the eve height to? What's the compensation in terms of F S R bump if you take a basement out? In some houses, it's a third of the square footage of the house, or are we contemplating a third F S R added? The report doesn't have those kinds of specifics in it, and so. I think that should be where the debate is, because I think there's going to be a willingness to compensate for the loss of the exemption in basements. But it's going to be over the, there's going to be the debate is over the amount, whether it's a third, fifty percent, twenty five percent, and what that would look like in terms of the massing of the building. So I think we need to have some of those, maybe, you know, show a few different options of what it would look like, and then we can give tighter direction on how we want it formulated. Like, I. I'm generally supportive of consolidating the single family homes. I know we have an incredibly complex system, and we've lost staff over it at times. When other municipalities have very simplified single family zones versus ours of twenty different things that you have to keep in your head. But I think that this could be more productive as a workshop discussion. Because I've literally, I've just got questions all over the place here. You know, the the front yard setback, I don't have an issue with us building in the front yard setback more, but I think it would be. More advantageous depending on how deep the lot is. So if somebody's sitting on a hundred foot depth lot, then building in the front yard is a challenge. If somebody's sitting. On a on a hundred and forty foot lot or a hundred and eighty foot lot, then moving the pieces around a little bit, I think we should have a little bit more flexibility in it. But if you have a blocked face in a neighborhood where they're all the same size, smaller lots, then maybe. You don't have the same kind of flexibility, and so maybe the lot size has an effect on whether the front of the property is in play or not, because if it's a super deep property. Then we can probably easily accommodate that extra square footage and density in the back part of the property. And if it's a shallower lot, maybe it's it's something else we have to consider. The total maximum peak height. You know, I know a lot of people these days, and it's big money, but are pushing for quite deep basements in some cases. I've seen an eleven foot ceiling in a basement. And so if you redo the massing in the building, you wouldn't be able to get eleven feet in any one of those floors. You'd hit the maximum before you'd. You'd be able to get tall floors into the mix. And so, you know, I'm kind of curious what what that looks like. We definitely don't want a situation where we end up with more impermeable surfaces on a lot, and some of this could accidentally unintentionally create. More impermeable surfaces on a lot, so. There's just so much to talk about on this. So I. I hope we can consider moving this to a workshop so we can better understand it, because there's a lot of good in here, and I think that this will move our spaghetti mess of a nineteen sixty rezoning. Forward into a new generation, but I think we need to understand. The impact on some of these changes. Council Ma, you're the second on the matter.
Yes, thank you. We are going to a workshop, right? You didn't deal with all the subjects already?
Yeah, I got more.
Sorry, a little levity. Okay. Kevin, seriously, there's a lot of work here. I also have some, generally, I'm supportive. My questions are going to be more around coach houses. I think you mentioned earlier about the additional space. It's probably more suited for. It, it's probably more suited for. New builds. So I'm looking at how do we handle the existing homeowner that wants to. Put in a coach house, uh and. And especially, I think uh Mayor Little mentioned to me earlier that when you kind of roll up all these twenty different uh bylaws. Hopefully you eliminate some of, I think they're called uh. Neighborhood level zoning bylaws, because I think, I just found out there's a bunch in Pembroke Heights, North Gate, and Grouse Woods that. Are slightly different, but it, it kind of renders uh certain families not being able to build a coach house on an eleven thousand-foot lot, which is kind of. You would think that's a big enough lot for it, but uh, no, I look forward to the workshop, and um, I think what you're hearing is uh. Council's really engaged, because if we do kind of put in place some of, or relax on the rules around this. This is going to address some of the housing needs that we have, and hopefully, you know, we get to that soft densification, which I think. People in our community would probably su- support more, so I, I look forward to the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zhang. Uh, appreciate all the work that you put into this. And uh, yeah, both in terms of the technical complexity and the depths of engagement that, that's gone into the recommendations. I, I don't know how much more we're going to get out of a workshop, other than adding kind of another step. These are all issues that we've discussed. Throughout this term at council, um, but um, yeah, I'm generally supportive as well. You, you had some humor in your presentation, so I'll put some in mine. Uh, this goes back to nineteen sixty-five, when this zoning bylaw was first uh created. Same year the Sound of Music hit the theaters, and the Beatles released the Help album. She said that, I didn't. But um, yeah, I think, I mean, a- all of these things in here are very supportable. I think one of the most important uh shifts is getting away from incentivizing these deep uh fully underground basements that do create problems on various levels. As you've, you've highlighted in your presentation, um, and proposing to lift them above floor area, above ground would create much more livable spaces. Um, and I think the re- reality is that the bulk of our rental stock has been in the form of secondary suites, and. Most of those are people living in, in basements like that, so. I, I'm totally supportive of that, of that change. Um, in terms of allowing the partial third story, that, that is going to change the character of, of neighborhoods over time. Um, it won't happen, you know, next year, but over time it will. City of North Vancouver has allowed third stories for some time, and you can see that, and they look different, for sure. The houses look higher, but. Um, that's, that's a reality of, of, you know, if we want to create more livable um spaces. Yeah, I guess, you know, one of my questions would be around lifting those basements and reallocating space above ground, how that might. Effect the costs in the short term, like how the building and the industry would react to that. And then, once we get to the point where these bylaws are adopted, how we communicate this to homeowners and builders. To understand what's changed and how to navigate the new rules. We want to incentivize coach houses, but the reality is we've seen very few coach houses built. And because we still have not made it simple enough, Council Ma has highlighted the, the issues, some of the issues around that. So um, if we are going to be relying on coach houses as much as we might be from that earlier discussion, then we're going to have to make it easier for people to actually build them. Or we'll never hit any housing targets, um, because the reality is, yeah, we're, we're not seeing them being built, so. I guess if, if it's going to go to a workshop, we'll have lots more opportunities to ask questions, but um, I just want to thank you again for all the work that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murray.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mr. Zhang. I believe that the format of your presentation um should be the standard. It's a lot of um complex information, um, but the way that you've laid it out. You know, in addition to the workshop where we want to ask more questions, um, your drawings, your um comparisons. It's been very helpful for me um to be able to understand this, you know, a very complex zoning bylaw. But able to put in the things that we need to focus on more. So I really do think staff um planning and further should adopt this sort of a format. With these examples, um, because sometimes the presentations get very confusing. It's very difficult to absorb, but I find this one to be very, very straightforward. And I've appreciated that uh as part of this issue. On the, the slide, um, on page six of your report in regards to increased maximum height, where you have the three existing scenarios, proposed regulations. Permit both scenarios. Under the pro for existing regulations, smaller building form, I can't imagine, like, I'm looking at this picture right here on your map. Like, you know, small, like, these houses are massive, and I understand that they sit in different kinds of lots. So I, I need to understand sort of that compared to, you know, a larger massing above ground. I once owned a forty-seven hundred square foot home uh with a partial basement, a main floor, and a second floor, so it was three stories. Um, it was on a large lot. Um, it was not a subterranean basement. It was a very livable basement with light that poured into it. And it was very, very livable. I think a lot of those kinds of basement suites existed, and it was only because. When speculation began, builders realized that with, with that exemption, they could just take. Uh, you know, advantage of that square footage, completely bury the basement, put the wet bar in the bowling alley, etc. Plus a two-bedroom basement suite, and then do all their living. So I think this is going to push the, you know, the architects to design more carefully. And, and uh, I think that was what we've been talking about. The issues around, um, the issues around uh the impact of building a kind of, the kind of basement like that where they're subterranean. Is displacing the water table. It's a huge issue for um builders and property owners to manage that level of water. And it will actually, in my opinion, um lessen the costs because of those subterranean basements and what they're costing. Not to mention the environmental impact that they have when we, they develop lot line to lot line and tear every single tree down on the property to build. To build their units. I had the same concerns about um that Mayor Little did in regards to um impervious services. Uh, there's parking on the street issues that we need to talk about, the height. You know, I've always thought about the height to be about thirty feet. That's what all the community zones came into, so we kind of just use that as a standard. You know, but what are those heights and massings actually going to look like when we pull it out of the basement? I appreciate the, the um sort of. The, the um tepid approach to looking at this and sort of, you know, testing the waters as we move forward. You know, where does council fit into all of that? When we are going to bring these basements out of the um, the, the ground. And um, and impacting, you know, in some areas quite significantly compared to areas on a slope, quite different. So I think those examples that the mayor talked about is very important. I'm interested in also um talking about um some gentle dens- densification beyond the urban containment boundary. Which I don't think was highlighted, and I'll take my other two minutes. Don't think that was very well highlighted um in the presentation in regards to coach houses. Because I believe that council, including myself, and I did ask many of them. If they understood that coach houses were allowed on every single fat uh lot in the um district. And that's what I assumed as well, until I realized that it was um not allowed beyond the urban containment boundary. However, we did used to allow coach houses if you took the secondary suite space and wanted to move it into a coach house. Uh, as recently as twenty nineteen, we allowed a coach house to be built beyond the urban containment boundary in Woodlands. And there are families that live out there, you know, subdividing lots out there is not the direction that we want to go to, go in. Because of the increase in uh infrastructure and servicing of those areas. It could be catastrophic to how we move forward as a municipality, and we've always maintained that we are not going to subdivide those lots. But to allow where appropriate a coach house uh to accommodate that multi-generational family, I think is very reasonable. And I would like to understand at that workshop how we could accommodate that, um, whether it be through a variance process or whatever. Woodlands and, and sunshining cascades is much like the rest of the municipality. We all have, you know, Upper Lonsdale. Upper Capilino has, you know, lots of challenges. Deep Cove, you know, where I'm from, they built houses on cliffs. You know, vertical um pieces of property that are taking on, you know, eight thousand square foot houses. Built into the side of a rock, so I'm sure there is a way for us to look at some gentle addition to uh the area of woodlands. To accommodate some multi-generational and gentle density in that area. So I, I'd like to bring that forward to the uh, to the um public, or to the workshop for discussion. But um, on the whole, I think your report and the presentation is excellent. And uh, I thank you for making it simple and using pictures. I'm just going to add one quick thing, Mayor Little. Years ago, um, I brought a motion forward because I'm very visual. To add variances in a photograph, and maybe that's what we need to look at going forward to the um workshop. Where you take an existing house, and then you superimpose what the addition in these three options would look like. Or these two options, what they would look like on that existing property, so we can get a visual of how that see, how that works. Often, the written form is difficult to understand, and a picture paints a thousand words, so that's what I'm interested in seeing.
On the urban containment boundary piece, if we brought in a regulation that allowed. More units, more sewage connections and others. In the urban containment area, would that put us in a collision or a problem with Metro Vancouver's regulations, or is that something we have the. Ability to change on our own?
Sorry, just to clarify, was that within the urban containment boundary or outside? Yeah, so adding additional units would essentially mean that the um, the zones outside the urban containment boundary would be, I guess, similar or identical to within. That would be a change to the urban containment boundary standard. We would definitely have a regional conversation that we'd have to have, because it would be expansion. If you have the same zoning within the urban containment boundary with the three units permitted, house, suite, and coach house, if that is accommodated, I don't think that's what I heard from Council Murray.
No, it's either, it could be either or.
In a two-dwelling format, could that be accommodated without us having to go to the region on a?
I think we'd want to consult with the regional planners, just so, just to see uh what, what the standard is in the region, uh because. I, I've just mentioned that could be a concern, so we'd want to give council some advice after a little bit of research. Yeah, I just wanted to note that, really appreciate all the questions tonight, and if council has any other, i- i- if this does move to workshop. And if council has any other additional questions, uh if we get those in advance, then we can prepare visuals to help in the conversation at the workshop, so definitely encourage that from council.
Mayor Little, can I just have a point of clarification? Um, I think within my, my um speaking time, I did refer to a coach house that was built out in the Woodlands as early as twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
And that was not in direct collision with the region.
Yeah, no, I think that was clarified, that that must be a situation where they don't have a second.
They don't, so it could be either or.
That's why I switched to it being two dwellings versus three dwellings. I think we got that clarified.
I think that information is important to come forward for us to consider.
Thank you. Counselor Pope.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Zhang, for um this great report. I uh concur that it's uh, it's, it's, it's well presented. And I generally um a- agree with a lot of it. I also have um some questions still. As far as change number one goes to discourage deep basements, I totally support the basement trade-off. And I wonder if we could go back to this screen that has this. Yeah, no. That's it. So on that left picture there. That's the kind of suite my daughter now lives in in Burnaby. Two bedrooms, twenty-four hundred dollars a month. It's appalling. I hope she's not listening. Well, of course, she's not listening, so I can say whatever I want, but it's um awful. It's just freaking awful, like those grates are her windows. Like, nobody should live like that. And anyway, um, so I'm really hugely supportive of that. And uh, and I think we have to do everything possible to make that happen. Change the house height to a partial third story and change number two. Well, I'd rather actually have change number three. Which is building in the front yard to allow two-story living in the front. But I would like to know, like, how much of a setback there would still be, and, and an increase in those kinds of questions. Definitely yes to a coach house size to fourteen hundred square feet to support more family type options. So I have questions too, but in the interest of moving forward, I would have preferred to move forward with this. Let staff do their work to sort out the details and have it come back to us in, in the form of a report. With details which we can thoroughly discuss more at that time, and that would leave lots of time for questions as well. The motion to move this to a workshop is, to me, just another way to keep status quo. This motion will delay and defer any progress on addressing the house, communities, housing needs. And as Counselor Back pointed out, there is a lot said during the last motion about how we already have capacity. For seventeen thousand more units, and the argument was made by some that we don't need any more capacity. The trouble is, I think that number refers to what we could expect with our last easing of coach house uh regulations. And the problem is, nobody's building coach houses. So that, just say we have the seventeen thousand capacity is technically true, but completely unrealistic. So. We'll never even come close to that capacity with coach houses. Like, what was it last year? Ten that were built? Do we know off the top?
Less.
What?
Less.
Less than ten last year. Yeah, so, yes, we have capacity for seventeen thousand. No, it's never going to happen. It's just completely unrealistic. So we need to do better to accommodate the needs of families and multi-generational living. And not move so painfully slowly.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you to staff uh for that uh excellent presentation and report. Thank you to all my council colleagues. I, I did study uh the report in depth, and I am generally supportive of the uh. And I won't repeat it right now, but all of the different initiatives. I would say that there's a lot of detailed information, and some of them could have implications. As was pointed out, for example, by Counselor Back with respect to the height and how over time it will change the character of neighborhoods. So I think the suggestion for a workshop where these matters can be uh considered in a little more depth is a good one, and I will be supporting that. I look forward to that discussion.
Thank you. Counselor Forbes.
Thank you, um, Mr. Zhang, for your report, and I would say everything that Counselor Murray has said. I found it uh loaded with detail. But also easy to understand, and I appreciated the uh examples that you showed. And how you walked us through it calmly tonight. Thank you for that. I'm generally supportive of all of the things that you've mentioned too, because uh, I mean, I, I know when I was. Walking around canvassing uh how many basement suites were like that, that they were just right underground, and then you put a grate on it, and there's no light getting in there. And for all the other reasons that you mentioned, but I think the, I would like a little more detail. And so I would support it going back to a workshop for, to get the detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Forbes. I have a, just a, a question. Like, I guess what I'm, I'm looking for is some advice from staff on how to produce. Basement suites in these houses going forward, because it, the challenge that always pops into my mind is, my, my wife, when we were looking for a house, she said. It must be main floor living. She did not want upstairs living, and that was one of her first requirements, is don't even show me a house that isn't main floor living. And uh, I don't know where that comes from for her, but um, the challenge is, if you're doing main floor living. It's hard to accommodate suites without a basement suite. And so what kind of forms are we looking about? Like, you, that you would come into a house and there'd be a second entrance to the second floor. And this, and the suite would be on the second floor, or, or, I'm just looking for some configuration ideas of what it would look like to walk into this. Or doesn't mean that there's not main floor living. You're going to walk in, and you're going to come up, set of stores, and do second floor living for the primary uh portion of the house. Therefore, producing main floor suites. I just, I'm wondering if you can show me some examples of what that might look like if we take it entirely out of the ground. And we still, of course, want to encourage suites, but what will that look like? Will the suites be up some stairs in the back? Will they tend to be carving up the main floor? That's all I'm looking for, just some examples.
Yeah, um, your worship, I think, I mean, there, it has, you know, I can imagine two scenarios. One is, if you want a flat lot, then. You can't really kind of have your cake and eat it too. If you want basements out of the ground, you're going to have to lift up the, the second floor. So the closest scenario I can think of for a main. So the closest scenario I can think of for main floor living would be a half buried basement. So that they still have the advantage of windows opening on without a great situation. And you would have to walk up a couple of steps and mo- many of our PC box homes are like that. You know, you walk in the front door, you, one stairs go up, one stairs go down. So I think most people would consider half a flight stair up still as main floor living. And the other option would be what you see kind of in the middle on the screen here is where you have a slope lot where one side of it is your accurate entrance into what's the second floor of the building. On the other side, you have accurate entrance into the lower floor of the building. So I think, you know, between those two, two situations, you have the most likely scenarios for me for a living while still giving the maximum amount of light to the, the sweep below.
Yeah, well, that's, that's my question and I have.
Yeah, exactly.
The clerk was being very kind and didn't start my two minute timer, but I just did have one just quick question about it still. So when you talk, so I used to be in the Heritage Commission and we would look at our old housing stock in the district of North Vancouver. Something that we lost over time was that you saw the architecture of the house and the layout of the house from the streetscape. And what ended up happening in the nineties in particular was we almost always ended up with a, a garage out front. And so the block face as you're going down the street is just garage, 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 garage. And you don't see the layout and design of the building so much. It's hidden behind the garage typically unless the garage is entirely incorporated in space, which is complex when you. I, I know, but they, they said you want to ask your questions at half time. I was authorized. I just want to know, can we have lots of visual examples of what?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and just to answer your, your question, I think it goes to both of the conversations that you raised is really, we're trying to create more flexibility in, in the zoning so that designers can use their skills and help owner, owners achieve solutions that work for them. Like even, you know, which is why I think with the staff recommendation was to permit both of these scenarios. Because once you remove the financial incentive to bury below ground, I think people naturally just raise their for as much as possible, less digging, less foundation work, less underpinning, less costs. And I think that, that will sort of take care of itself, hopefully. And your, your second point about the garage in the front yard, well, that's because our zoning regulations prohibited anything other than a garage to be within your front yard. So yeah, happy to discuss that. You know, we got lots of details. It'll be all you can eat details.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I see no further speakers. I'm going to call the question on the motion. All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Counsel, we normally take a break at about nine o'clock. We're past that time. I'm wondering, we have two items left. I can't. So I'm asking for three minutes. Well, three minutes, stand up, stretch, and we'll resume in three minutes.
Late on Friday afternoon, Environment and Climate Change Canada provided a revised forecast specific to the North Shore warning of extreme rainfall. Although last minute, this heads up allowed us to put additional measures in place like scheduling more crews for the weekend and putting technical staff and consultants on standby. The storm arrived overnight and by Saturday morning, we had sustained rainfall intensities exceeding 20 millimeters an hour at times and seven hours of rainfall exceeding 10 millimeters an hour. We have six rain gauges across the district. This slide shows that over a 72 hour period, all gauges recorded over 250 millimeters with upper elevations receiving even more. While it's fairly normal for our upper elevations to experience heavy rainfall, it was the lower elevations where we have the most concentrated development and infrastructure, where rainfall intensity and duration exceeded historic levels. This storm was unprecedented in terms of rainfall intensity, duration and totals. Our engineering consultants have analyzed the storm and classified it as a one and 200 year event based on our historical record. When we look ahead to design our infrastructure for the end of this century, this type of storm is something that we can anticipate happening more frequently. So instead of it being a 200 year return period, we can anticipate return periods of 25 to 50 years. In addition to the heavy rainfall, there were other complicating factors. This was the first major storm of the season and of the past few years. While the district's storm drainage system has provisions for debris management, the volume of wood debris exacerbated the heavy flows. We also know that across the district, we have issues with inflow and infiltration of our sanitary system or what we call INI. So when we have a large storm, incorrect cross connections can have domestic storm water flowing into them and overwhelming the sanitary system. This map shows the 700 plus calls that were received from our residents needing help over a six hour period on Saturday, October 19th. It also shows the widespread impact of this event and on the concentrated impact in the Deep Cove and Indian River area. At its peak for an hour, we were receiving one call every 15 seconds, coinciding with the complication of Suri dispatch system being overwhelmed. The storm moved a substantial amount of unplanned debris through the collective drainage system, creating impacts such as debris flows that cause creeks to evolves into neighboring properties, slope stability issues that posed ongoing risks, clogged culverts that resulted in major overland flooding and other things like sinkholes, road undermining and other damaged municipal infrastructure. The district's engineering department operations center was activated to coordinate response operations. And similar situations were happening across the North Shore and in other mountainous communities like Coquitlam. The North Shore Emergency Operations Center was activated and brought together the three North Shore municipalities while also working closely with Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh Nations and the North Shore Fire Department Operations Center, providing a cooperative regional response. The reception center at Mickey McDougall was also activated where North Shore Emergency Management Staff and Volunteers provided emergency support services such as short term lodging, meals and necessities to impacted North Shore residents. A state of local emergency was declared by Mayor Little for the geographic area east of Deep Cove, which allowed the district to enter private property to perform critical work, restrict travel through the hardest hit areas and require evacuation where needed. Uh, this slide provides a timeline showing that the response phase lasted until November 1st. Then we transitioned to recovery through the spring. So we've walked through a snapshot of the event and now we'll talk to you about sharing some of our observations and learnings. Recognizing the human, physical, economic and environmental impacts of this atmospheric river event, the district commenced a formal review to document the sequence of events, gather insights identified through staff interviews and data review, assess the effectiveness of the district's emergency response and identify opportunities to further build resilience to flood hazards. Many aspects of the response worked well, including staff from multiple departments stepped up, were flexible and acted even as the most severe impacts unfolded outside of their regular working hours. Extensive investments in creek hazard protection over the past 30 years significantly mitigated damage. Critical debris restriction, debris retention structures performed as designed, conveying very high flows of water and debris. Although some culverts were overtopped, the existence and maintenance of these protective measures prevented far more extensive damage. Expenditure authorization processes flowed smoothly between the Engineering Department Operations Center, the North Shore EOC and the province. Engineering, finance and North Shore Emergency Management work together to ensure maximum cost recovery from provincial and federal governments. Communication staff from the three North Shore municipalities and North Shore Emergency Management Information Officer developed clear, timely and consistent public messaging and responded to the many media requests. In the spirit of continuous improvement, there are some opportunities identified to enhance resilience to future emergency events. These include clarify roles and authorities between the Engineering Department Operations Center, the North Shore EOC and within the organization, and expand emergency main, emergency management training programs. Integrate technology and systems to improve situational awareness and establish a common operating picture. Review and refine policies that allow crews to access private storm drainage infrastructure and enforce the removal of encroachments. Reduce cross connections between storm and sanitary systems in response to INI. The full list of task force recommendations are in a chart at the back of the report, excuse me, which is included in your package. If there are any that you would like to specifically discuss, we can do that at the end of the presentation. We have categorized the actions as mitigation, preparedness, response and recovery, as well as short, medium and long term. The short term recommendations are those that we feel are most important to implement ahead of the next fall winter storm season. So we will highlight those at this time and then plan to report back to you in the fall with progress made. And I'll hand it back to Peter to give you an update as to where we, where we've gotten so far.
Thanks Fiona. So counsel, I'll now briefly walk you through a discussion from what was observed from the event and now pivot to what are some of the improvements that we've done since the event or plan to do in the months ahead. So as Fiona shared, the task force report is divided into short, medium and long term priorities. Effectively, anything in the short term should be a priority to start or implement this year with medium and long term priorities beginning in 2026 and 2027 respectively. For tonight, I want to take the opportunity to briefly discuss those that are in the near term. Those are the near term and quick wins that have already been implemented or are in the works, given that the next fall storm season is just a few months away. Attachment two of your report provides a table of each of the short term actions identified in the task force report and what that current status is. Some key highlights include that we are making refinements across a number of areas, including the weather forecasting we receive, our working alone procedures, proactively staging equipment, tweaks to our dock structure and further training opportunities. We're repairing public infrastructure impacted by the event along with additional short term improvements in certain areas such as regrading works along Frome Road to improve, to improve overland flow paths and tweaks to the Galant culvert. And we will be focusing on where possible high priority locations could be for INI upgrades of public infrastructure to reduce pressure on the sanitary system during major storm events. From a financial perspective, our objective is that short term priorities can be accommodated within the approved 2025 budget through reprioritizing our work plans with the medium and long term priorities being considered as part of the future annual financial planning processes. Before I wrap up, I think it's important, counsel, to really bring all of this together in terms of context. While we experienced widespread impacts last fall from this unprecedented storm, we recorded no fatalities or no main, no major injuries within the developed area of the district. Generally speaking, our infrastructure performed well and the investments in drainage and storm infrastructure over the past 20 to 30 years had paid off. Further to this, the incredible efforts of our operational crews, frontline staff and the many individuals responding to the emergency also limited the degree of impact, and I want to thank everyone involved. But with all emergencies of this magnitude, not everything goes perfectly. We have shared with you some of the observations and learnings from the event, and we are already in the process of implementing a number of those short term priorities. This type of post event review is something that aligns with our culture of wanting to continuously learn with the goal of making our community more resilient in the future to these types of major storms. With that, this concludes our presentation and I'll hand back to council. Thank you.
I'll be moving the staff recommendation. I've got Counselor Back a second. So first of all, I want to say fantastic work. This is an incredible amount of information for us to consider. I, I want to start by commending our staff in the incident. People came out, changed their weekend plans, helped assist on the fly. People came out, changed their weekend plans, helped assist on the fly to be able to give us relief in the case of Gallant Creek where it was overflowing and we had the fire department had to close off the road and we had to rope rescue people out of their businesses and spaces along Gallant. Six houses deeply impacted along Panorama in the twenty-four-hundred block, another three in the twenty-seven-hundred block, plus all of the workout at Ossler Creek. And and then beyond that, I mean, Lynn Valley itself also had an incredible challenge with Frome being overrun. And so it was a widespread event, and I would say that my hat's off to all of our staff. I think they did a fantastic job in responding in the incident. I'm really glad that we've gone into this extra depth, so I know that North Shore Emergency Management is preparing its own report and at the more general level across the North Shore municipalities. And we decided to go into an extra depth to look specifically at district and North Vancouver infrastructure, and I'm very glad we have. I think that there's still, you know, lots to learn about what future intense rain events may look like in our community. But even though we've invested a tremendous amount of money in Gallant Creek and upgrading it, it's still overran the culvert. Now, the culvert did its job. It kept the debris out of the pipes below the culvert. That's its job number one. But it's, you know, we we in in future rain events, if we have good forecasting models, then you can pre-position, you can have spotters, you can have people looking for these these kinds of failures taking place in 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 the situation and and respond accordingly. But we're always going to be, to some degree, vulnerable to the forecast models. And if if the forecast models don't say extraordinary event, we won't take extraordinary measures. And so we still need to work beyond this report at that higher level to improve the the warnings. I get it. Atmospheric river rain events, tough to predict exactly where they're going to land, exactly where they're going to hit. But even if you go back and look at the reports, they were protecting the predicting that the the most intense spot was going to be about halfway up Indian Arm. It wasn't even going to be in Deep Cove. And so it's, you know, we need to improve those systems as well in order to make sure that we can, you know, apply these kinds of principles in in future rain events in our community. So I enthusiastically support us moving forward with the medium and long-term plans as well and making sure that in future, we take advantage of the opportunity to pre-position equipment, put scouts if we need to, people to watch the river if necessary, but also the long-term capital plan of saying what what else can we be improving to make sure that we're more resilient during the next significant rain event. But this is all great work to start us off with, and so I just wanted to say thank you, and I'll be supportive of the staff recommendation. Counselor back?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Little. Thank you very much for the report back and and all the work that's gone into overview, you know, reviewing everything that happened on that day in October and providing this list of recommendations. I do echo the mayor's comments. I think so many things worked well, and I do want to thank, you know, all the staff that had pitched in and and were there to support on a on a crazy, crazy day, and it was it was very wild. I will always remember sort of the helpless feeling, though, of watching neighbors' homes being flooded and really not knowing, you know, what what we could be doing. So I think there were obviously a lot of areas where we could improve, you know, a lot of them around communication and different systems and who was who was leading the response. And and so I'm really interested in some of the long-term improvements, and and I know that we've got some neighbors here from Frome Road. So I wonder if you could comment specifically on the Frome and Hastings Creek area about long-term changes we can make there to improve improve the situation.
Yeah, so through the mayor, I can briefly speak to the short term right now because that's getting underway probably either now or within the coming days. So we're looking at re-profile on the sidewalk as well as the road through the use of speed tables, so there's a bit more of an overland flood path from Kilmer into Hastings. That's obviously an area that we saw an issue last October. We have historically looked at additional areas for capital projects in and around Kilmer. It's very expensive, and so we're talking millions of dollars of infrastructure improvements. And so staff are going away to look at the long-term potential plans there. It's a budding school district property as well, so there's a number of conversations we still need to have in terms of what is a feasible long-term plan in that area.
And just on that, I know the school district property was one of the issues in terms of moving forward. Can you comment on it on that at all, as to whether they're open to the daylighting of the creek there?
Yeah, so so through the mayor, I think what I am comfortable sharing publicly is is that we're actually just relooking at the design as well, seeing what opportunities are there to refine it, finesse it, see what partnerships we do or don't need as a as a result of that. So nothing that I can share at this point in time, but we are just kicking the tires, so to say, in terms of the the design we've had historically.
We know we're going to see more of these events more frequently, and and they're going to be severe in many cases, you know, of this kind of magnitude. So I'm very interested in how we incorporate some of the capital planning into for for some of these projects into our budgets moving forward. Frome obviously is one example, and I know, you know, how how hard-hit other parts of the district were. So I do look forward to those discussions and how we can prioritize some of these projects and move them forward. Thank you.
Counselor back. Counselor Murray?
Thank you, Mayor Little. Thank you, staff, for the report. It's an excellent report, and and I look forward to us moving through it. There's a lot to consider. For me, right now, I need to understand what tweaks mean ahead of the next storm system. I also want to request an additional rain gauge in the Deep Cove area. Most of the gauges are on the western side, center and western side of the municipality. Anecdotal information from locals that measured their own amounts of rainfall, put it close to four hundred millimeters in the cove. We know the weatherman is not always right, and we know the cove gets an enormous amount of rain because of the fjord and the the mountains. So right now, I can just hear Sam Barker, who owns the unit at the Gallant Street Culvert, saying to me, Lisa, what's in place for the storm system in the fall? Because her unit, much like Frome, has been hit and flooded halfway up the windows in the living room three times in the last twenty years, three times. And so she is going to ask me what is the district. She's already asked me multiple times, and I have assured her that we are going to make sure that it is not flooded for a fourth time when this atmospheric river weather systems comes back into the district. I I understand the implications and the short-term actions and what we're trying to get to to set up those policies, but to be that low-hanging fruit that is action up against this next system. I've witnessed four floods in Deep Cove and have been actively involved in all of them. I spent two days in the cove with the last atmospheric river. It is overwhelming. The protection of public and private property absolutely has to be our priority. We cannot allow these systems, because of dollars, to control the future. So we need to understand how we're going to in the most efficient way, and certainly in a way that does not completely bankrupt us. But, you know, when I think of that that culvert being plugged by debris and a backhoe simply lifted up a log and it turned off like a tap, I need to understand what we're going to be putting in place this fall. Can you can you give me assurance so I can phone Sam tomorrow and tell her, just like the residents of Frome, how are they going to be? Because they've been impacted multiple times as well, and we've been discussing this issue with them for over a decade. I've been around and I've I've had discussions in regards to this for years. How are we going to help prevent some of this?
Yes, so through the mayor, there's various aspects to responding to that particular question. So last last fall and winter, what we were doing proactively while we still were understanding what the vulnerabilities were in the system, we were staging equipment. And so Deep Cove was one of the area where we were staging equipment, because as you've kind of mentioned, in October, as soon as the debris was flowing, as soon as there was an excavator there, the infrastructure itself is of a size that's appropriately designed. What we are doing also with staff is looking at modifications to the grates and the gates within Gallant so that it can actually pass through more debris out to the ocean. That was one of the areas that we also identified as part of the review of that particular culvert. So we are making, we are looking at some physical modifications to that culvert. Staff still exploring what that looks like. We have been talking about whether there's operational changes when we do have larger events, but the challenge that we have is that every time we go and stage equipment, it costs us money. So we're trying to figure out what is a threshold that we start to look in these places, and that work's going to be done over the summer in terms of getting prepared for the fall. Is there anything you wanted to add, Fiona, at all?
Through the mayor, just in addition to what Peter's mentioned, pre-planning emergency response in some key vulnerable locations. So the locations that we know that flood repeatedly, in addition to staging equipment and looking at the infrastructure, also working cross-departmentally as staff teams to who does what, when, to pre-plan our response for those specific areas.
Okay, so I would say, I'll take my two minutes. I would say that I'm willing to absorb the costs of staging that equipment this fall so we can get through this second phase of this plan, because we cannot be put in the position again where we know areas are going to flood regularly. And in my thirty years on this council, I know where they are. I'm going, the next atmospheric river, I'll just go stand in the cove. Catherine and I will sit there at the top of Gallant, and I will make a call to say we need to have support down here. The the local community has raised money for flood deflection equipment that we want to install. We want to work with the district. They want to work with the district. They've raised money. If the district is holding the money donated by the Royal Bank to be able to look at flood mitigation equipment, that is not the solution to the problem, but it's going to get us over this next system that's going to come in, and we have no idea when. It could be October, it could be November, it could be December, it could be January. We could have two of them. So I just need to understand, and I would like staff to forward those tweaks and what we can do if there's a budget issue that we need to address as far as staging that equipment. I need to understand that because we need to activate that for this fall while we get through the short term and then the medium-term actions. The short-term actions are more policy-driven and organizational structure. The midterm actions are the action that we actually go and do something, and I need to understand the difference and how we can fill that gap for this fall and this weather system. So Sam Barker and our residents from Frome don't flood again because we just we just can't go through it again. It's, people cannot get insurance anymore on their homes because of the overland flooding. And they are taking money out of their own pocket to rectify these issues, and we just have to have all hands on deck and address these issues for the next storm season while we're working through all this very important work. So Mr. Cohen, tell us what you need to be able to stage that equipment. So when that culvert gets plugged with debris coming down that mountain, again, we have somebody to just pluck it out and turn the tap off so we don't flood.
Yes, so through the mayor, in terms of what the task force report and the recommendations are, we're spending the summer to figuring out what is the trigger for when we go and do those types of activities. So we certainly want to explore in the coming couple of months, when would we have a certain size of storm event that we would action some of these aspects? In terms of the financial aspects, to be honest, as I look at recommendation two, I think that's sufficient. The purpose of what we're doing for the short-term priorities in twenty-twenty-five is to reassign other work programs. And so right now, we are hopeful that we can absorb that by reprioritizing other aspects just for two years. If we have a budget pressure, we'll just come through our general budgeting process saying like, we've tried, but we've got a budget pressure, council, here's what it looks like. For example, the fall amendment process, we would look through that. So I think from my perspective, on a financial perspective, we as staff need to go away and figure out what are those thresholds? And then if we do need to action them and there's a budget pressure, I think recommendation two is sufficient for twenty-twenty-five budget components.
Okay, so I just I just want to make sure I'm really clear because I want to know what we're going to do at Gallant Creek and at Frome for the fall season in regards to having equipment staged or some sort of flooding deflection equipment so this doesn't happen for a fifth time.
Answer to that through the mayor is that that's what we're doing this summer is figuring out exactly what we're doing in the fall.
I just want to be really clear so I get that information back, or I'll get Sam Barker to call you guys.
Thank you, Mayor Little.
Oh, actually, sorry, I do need to pause you for just a sec.
So moved.
We need a motion to extend the meeting beyond ten-thirty. Simple majority is all it takes to go beyond ten-thirty. So it's been moved by Counsel Murray, second by Counsel Back. We're ready to call the question. All in favor, contrary-minded? Motion carries with. Are you in favor or opposed? Okay. We all of a sudden got very close.
I just need to leave.
With Counsel Ma opposed.
I just need to leave at a family committee.
Yeah. So the meeting is extended to eleven o'clock. It will require unanimous consent at eleven o'clock, and it will not get it. All right.
Yeah. There you go.
There you go. Counsel Ma, back to you.
First of all, thank you to all the district staff, including those at Nassim, Fire Rescue, RCMP, and all the other people that responded. This report's very comprehensive and provides an objective analysis of the unprecedented event. At the same time, it highlights the interconnected issues, aging infrastructure, wildland fire preparedness, loss of forest canopy and the impact of new developments. I do I do have one question. In addition to the engineering side, looking at, you know, whatever steps you need to take, I was just wondering what communications will be made to people to advise them to, you know, get their own places ready? Just for an example, the good folks at the Pembroke Heights Community Association invited Nassim to come out and speak to a group of residents last week just to talk about emergency preparedness. This event is so huge, but, you know, maybe there's small things that people can do, like make sure their storm drains are cleared or, you know, I'm not sure. I think people are willing to help and do their part, but, you know, might this be, here's some things that you should think of before the next storm season. So but I, you know, going forward, I'm going to defer to our qualified staff to make the necessary adjustments and prep for the future events, and I think this report has a lot of good guidance for steps moving forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I've got Counsel Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this report. And a special thanks to the many frontline staff who worked tirelessly last October to help people and fix giant flooding problems. However, this report has sugarcoated how unprepared the district was and downplays what went wrong. Let me be clear, this is not the fault of many staff. It was a failure of senior leadership to properly prepare our staff and communications for responding to this type of emergency, and it could have been so much worse. In other communities, lives were lost, and it is wrong to diminish the very real impact that is still being felt by a number of residents, including some who are here from Lynn Valley tonight. We have known for a very long time now that these big climate events are going to intensify and will become more damaging and more expensive. We knew that storms like the one we had were no longer a once-in-a-two-hundred-year event. A task force was formed after the event, and council was promised an initial report back in January. An expensive consultant was hired to lead the team. So what took so long?
Okay, do you have any comments about the the work plan or the schedule for the report?
Through the Mayor Little, I can briefly respond to that. So one of the key aspects from the task force, and Fiona was part of that task force as as one of my staff members, one of the key pieces on that was interviewing the dozens of staff that actually were involved in that and then going through all the lessons learned and the observations to come together with a report that is something that is both, it's going to be objective, as well as it's going to be, you know, part of that continuous improvement. To come together with a report that is something that is both, it's going to be objective as well as it's going to be, you know, part of that continuous improvement. Spirit that we're trying to do as part of this as well. So it's just taken time in terms of just getting this report back to council.
As to that delay, we had to plan the 2025 budget with no data and no numbers to account for severe climate impacts. I'm glad to see that this is proposed in the 2026 budget. And I'm glad to hear that the short term actions have been made a priority for this year. But I'm worried about what will happen this summer with possible fires and heat domes. And I'm worried there won't be enough, there won't be that enough won't be done in time for this fall. And I'm concerned about the budget and that there's not enough in there for climate remediation. So I'm fine pleased we finally have this report and and all of these details and 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 it's it's finally moving forward, but. Don't need to say more, I don't think.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor. I'm just. Still having some trouble with that, you know, heavy hand on senior staff on this. I just want to confirm. The day before the event, the prediction was that it was going to be somewhere between 100 to 150 millimeters of rain. Is that correct?
That's correct. We get forecasted 2 P M. Every day.
Any update beyond that point forward, saying it was going to be dramatically higher?
Uh, environment, the the forecast from Environment and Climate Change Canada was the first indication that it was something quite significant, and I can't recall the time, but it was the afternoon on that Friday.
The problem I have is the reasonability test. If if is it reasonable to assume that they would have been out by double? And and should we have acted as though it was going to be a 300 millimeter storm? We acted and responded as though it was 100 to 150 millimeter storm, which is pretty normal seasonal storm for us, even though we hadn't had one recently before that. And and so the the problem is backcasting. We did respond reasonably in the situation. Had the predictive technologies produced a report that said it was going to be a 300 millimeter event, we would have done different things in the time. So I don't know that it's fair to levy a shot at the senior staff or the response. They responded appropriately for 100 to 150 millimeter event. And we were let down by the forecasting services. Is that acceptable going forward? Of course not. Can we do learn more and do better? Of course we can. But I think that it's not fair to say that there was a significant failure. This was way beyond what was predicted for the event. And it was not unreasonable for staff to for senior staff to respond the way they did, which was to put additional staff on for the weekend, which is what they would normally do for 100 to 150 millimeter event. So I. I don't know what else to say about about the comment than that.
I would like to respond to that, and I believe I have time left. So it wasn't about that, Mr. Mayor. It was about a systemic lack of planning. Behind the scenes in advance so that we would be prepared for that kind of event. And this is what came out in the report, and it's kind of buried in the in the recommendations or opportunities for where we could do better. But if you drill down on that, and if you were able to be in the closed meeting that we had several weeks ago when this report was first. Presented in a different form. Then you would know that it's much more extensive.
In camera meetings are not for public disclosure.
So I was promised out of that in camera meeting that the new report would resemble the old the original report in the and in the closed meeting, but it didn't.
Counselor, that's offside. You're not allowed to reveal information from from a meeting or indicate what. Staff have produced a report for public consumption here. That's what you need to talk about.
Okay, I think I have. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further speakers on the matter. Ready to call the question. All in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried. Counsel, we have one last item for your consideration. Which is. Counsel report from Counselor Hanson, which is bicycle bells and safety. Hanson, would you like to make your motion and we'll get a second or on the matter? Okay, okay, and your comments, Counselor. Get your microphone in there.
Please to be able to bring this motion forward. I'd like to thank those in the cycling advocacy community. Who have given me this idea, and I think it's an important one for the district. The mandate of this council includes supporting active transportation. This means encouraging cycling and walking. Inevitably, paths and the trails that we build will be multi use with cyclists and pedestrians sharing the route. This requires us to consider the logistics of cyclists and pedestrians interacting on our active transportation corridors. Cyclists need a way to communicate as they overtake pedestrians. Our population is diverse, seniors, dog walkers. All of these require courtesy when being overtaken by cyclists. Communication is the key to trail users interacting without incident. Bells assist cyclists to communicate with other trail users and avoid startling pedestrians. A bell on a bike can cost as little as $10. Yet this minimal investment can do a lot to keep our trails safe and agreeable for all users. The city of Vancouver requires bicycles to be equipped with bells and they're in their bylaws. And of course, city of Vancouver is a leader in the whole active transportation area. No similar bylaw exists in any of our North Shore communities nor with the Motor Vehicle Act of British Columbia. In European countries, meanwhile, where active transportation is more developed, I understand that the requirement for bells on bikes is a commonplace. We mandate bicycling helmets, we mandate horns on cars, bells on bikes is just one more step towards creating a safe. And courteous cycling culture. Assuming this motion succeeds, I plan to contemplate a U V C M motion that would call for bells on bikes across the province. Let's do what we can to keep our multi use pass safe. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Counselor Murray. Is there a second or any comments?
Totally support this, but I also think there should be a discussion in the future just about cyclists using existing bike lanes and. There's some on the road, there's some in the lanes, there's some on sidewalks. It is very confusing and I think, you know, the community needs to have that discussion, but for this I will absolutely support it.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Additional comments?
Thank you, Mayor Little. Thank you, Counselor Hanson, for bringing the motion forward. As someone who regularly rides all kinds of bikes from road bikes to various e-bikes, I do have bells on all my bikes. But while I support the intent of your motion, Counselor Hanson, I I'm really not sure how you would enforce this at all. I do understand that the city of Vancouver has this requirement under their street and traffic bylaw. But in practice, I don't think the the focus has been enforcement in the city of Vancouver. I think it's largely been around education first. And so I think that would be really challenging. We often talk about how we can enforce our bylaws and and this, I think this one would be would be challenging. I think, you know, a social, you know, community pressure might play a bigger role. I know in the city of North Vancouver, when you're riding along the Spirit Trail, you'll see. Signs that say slow your roll because it's a multi use path and you recognize that when you're riding your bike or your scooter. On a multi use path, there's going to be people walking, rolling, you know, kids, dogs, and you have to ride appropriately. So. I don't think mandating bells on bikes is going to shift that culture, but I think. Education in this case signage, perhaps partnerships with local cycling groups or cycling stores to spread the message would be more effective. I think anytime you start mandating something like this, it just is going to create a whole another thing for us to try and manage and enforce. And again, I I I know bells are effective. Most e-bikes are actually have a bell integrated into them now when you buy them. So there's no need to buy a bell. It's it's already part of the bike. So I don't, I think you're trying to solve a problem here with something that that isn't going to be effective as much as I appreciate the intent behind your motion, Counselor Hanson. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Just my own comments on the matter. I I don't know what's actually the law right now. So my understanding is both in Vancouver's case. It requires either a bell or a horn or some other noise making device. And the Motor Vehicle Act requires a bell or a horn or some other way to notify, well, sorry, Hub's website says. B C law requires that cyclists use a front white light and a rear red light and after dark, and that bicycles must have a bell or horn. That's on on Hub's website. They say that that's that's the B C law. Which means it's already the law in B C. Maybe it's not in the Motor Vehicle Act, but it's in something in provincial law. So. Before we start staff down the road to replace something that's actually already. In law in B C, maybe we should just do it, do a double check. But so Hub says it's already the law in B C. So I'm for staff to look and see if it's still if it's actually the law in B C, but it's. It's. I guess to your point, it would mean that we would have the ability to to.
Enforce.
Regulate and enforce it as well. Although the only thing is typically when you're in an area of concurrent jurisdiction where the province has exerted a jurisdiction and they say but bells are required. We actually can't bring in. A piece of legislation that overrules there once they've already exerted the jurisdiction. Something to look into. I I'm happy to support the motion, but I'm hoping staff can report back quickly on that before we spend a lot of time digging into the matter.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Little. My understanding is that there is not a province wide legislative mandate. And if I'm wrong on that, then we can learn that and move forward with that information.
Okay. Happy to support it and find that out. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Contrary minded. Motion is carried opposed. Okay, motion is carried with Counselor Beck opposed. We really don't have time for reports tonight, counsel. I think we're gonna we're gonna. Complete this evening. We've completed the the agenda this evening. I'm willing to accept adjournment at this point. Thank you, Counselor Murray. Thank you to staff for preparing the reports for consideration this evening. I would also want to thank members of the public for sticking through us through the evening with us. And thank you, counsel, for making important decisions for our community going forward tonight. So everybody have a fantastic week. Good night.